Are you ready?
Do not go by the list.
Are we ready, or, okay? We are now reconvening the recess meeting of August 14. This is the regular meeting and public hearing which is being continued from the 14th. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America with its fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda amendments on the August 21st, 2018 Agenda updated August 21st, 2018, and posted to the District website. Just to recap where we were, we actually, I don't believe, had approved the agenda as amended before we went into the recess. So, members, we are now on approving the agenda as amended, as amended on the floor at the meeting on the 14th, and as amended earlier today and yesterday. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Having been moved by Mr. Kennedy and seconded by Mr. Cologne, are there any debates or amendments to the agenda?
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am, Vice Chair Messenger.
I noticed a lot of stuff got added today, and I was just looking for an understanding why that happened.
So, there are a, there were a number of items on the agenda for the 28th which actually should have been on the agenda before the school, before the students started back to school. Those items must be approved no later than the 28th. Since we were meeting today, those few items that were scheduled for the 28th where the superintendent must have those approved were added.
Okay.
So, if something were to happen, we can at least, the superintendent can conduct the business of the district.
Okay. I don't understand if something were to happen. What does that mean?
Well, this way, we have two shots. If this, if we end up with melted batteries or whatever, and we can't do it, at least we could do it on the 28th. But we can at least pass the things that need to be passed so that the superintendent can conduct business. Those items are vendors that are actually doing work, starting on the first day of school, and they have no contract. And they've been kind enough to do the work that we were going to contract with them to do. They're doing it without a contract. So, it should have been done before the schools opened. So, the best thing we can do is we have the meeting tonight, get those agreements. Hey, we've got students who are doing, who are in clinics and doing the EMT training, and there's no contract covering them. This should have been probably done in June to renew the contracts for July. So, the sooner we get those contracts approved, the sooner we're in compliance.
Okay.
Mr. Minor, if you'll turn your mic on.
Mr. Chair, will you tell us what items in particular you were just talking about?
You received an email earlier, and actually, I had requested that these items be, that the amendment be done yesterday so people would have notice, and for some reason, it did not get done yesterday. But if you look at your agenda, item number 13, let's start with item number 11, approval of the Youth Mental Health and Training Grant allocation for the 2018-2019 school year is one, as I said, that's for the 2018-2019 school year. It actually should have been on an agenda prior to this. Number 12, approval of the contract between the School District of Manatee County and the State of Florida Department of Education Vocational Rehabilitation for the 2018-2019 school year. Item number 13, approval of the renewal agreement between the School Board of Manatee County and provider for clinical experience from Manatee Technical College EMT Paramedic Technology Students for the 2018 through 2021 school year. Number 14, approval to apply, accept, and expend Title IV Part A federal grants for the 2018-2019 school year. Might I add that the school year's already started so that we can give the authority to accept that money and for the superintendent to spend it. Item number 15, approval to apply, accept, expend the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant effective August 28th through July 2019. Item number 16, approval of the Food Service and Nutrition Services Agreement to provide meals for the St. Joseph's Catholic School for the 2018-2019 school year. That's one I was referring to, you know, providing the service without an agreement because the board hadn't approved it. And then, on new business, the approval of participation in the 2018 Formula One In-School STEM Challenge. Those are our students that will be going to Singapore. They're actually leaving pretty soon, so the sooner we can approve their travel that they've already paid for and have raised the funds for. And I think, Mr. Minor, that completes the items. Not all the items were taken off of the 28th agenda, but those that the superintendent felt necessary to get approved as soon as possible are on today's consent agenda.
Mr. Chair? I haven't heard really compelling reasons, except maybe great emergency occurs on August 28th, the world comes to an end, or something like that, for giving such short notice to the public for moving this to this agenda from the agenda a week hence. And is there any other reason than you've already stated, you know, for this change?
Mr. Minor, I believe you're a member of the bar in at least two states. As an attorney, would you recommend an organization do business without an agreement? Would you recommend that our students participate in clinical training at other sites without us having an agreement?
Under these circumstances, I would want to make sure that whatever parties I was dealing with, and we're dealing responsibly to the community, that they had all the necessary, you know, proper notice of what was going to transact before going ahead.
So, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Minor?
I'd like to make a motion that those things be kept on the August 28th agenda that you've just mentioned.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, your motion fails for lack of a second. Any other debate on the agenda? Hearing none, we are on approving the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Show the agenda adopted as amended. All right, now, and I guess I need a little bit of guidance. I think we had had public comment, and we were on the motion to rescind when we left off.
We had heard public comment, we had returned to the approval of the agenda. After the approval of the agenda, there was a recess. When we came back from recess, we were evacuated from the building. At that point, we were ready to move on to the-
To the motion.
Yes.
So, picking up where we left off, and I'll just make a note that we were informed by the fire department that it was fortunate that we actually had people in the room when the batteries, the backup battery power supply to the server room, the batteries were beginning to melt down. And it was their finding that had we not had staff in the room when that occurred, we probably would not have this building to meet in. So, it was, it was quite fortunate. Maybe it was an act of God that we had people up there smelling the fumes and calling the fire department. So, with that, I believe, I believe, Madam Vice Chair, this was your motion?
I'm a little, there were a lot of things added to this agenda, and I don't understand why, if we just approved this agenda, which had public comment as part of the agenda, why we're now skipping over that when we just added more things to the agenda?
Okay. Do we have, so you would prefer not to move into your motion and then have comments on the new agenda items afterwards?
Well, I just think a lot of people, well, I just think a lot of people signed up for public comment, and I-
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy. For a suggestion.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that we ask our public commenters, if their comment is regarding the high school name issue, that they hold off until we actually get to the new business item. And then, if anybody listed for public comment, and I'm looking at 13 right now, so if any of those 13 people have something other than the, the high school naming issue to talk about, they can come forward and do that now, and then the other public comments wait until we take up the next item.
Okay, or another suggestion is that if we have comments on the naming, because that's the first motion, that we let them make their comments, and then we have another comment period for the rest of the agenda.
That's okay, but as Gina said, we did just approve this agenda.
What's your preference? What is, what is, what is the board's preference?
I believe in as much public comment as possible. So, I feel like if we just added several new things, that if people want to make a public comment on any of those things, they should be allowed to do so.
Well, are we gonna go for two public comment periods, then? That's okay. That would give people an opportunity to speak.
No, I think his, what he was suggesting is that we just don't have one, and we just move straight to-
No, that's not, no, 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 no. What I was saying is, no, what I was saying is that we have had public comment on your motion. If there's anyone else that wants to comment on the renaming, the items were added to both one new business item, which we normally would take public comment before that item. The other items were added to the consent agenda. So, we would normally take public comments on the consent agenda. And so, my suggestion is, since we are prepared to pick up where we left off, having public comment been completed regarding the, the motion to rescind the name of the high school, that we conduct that business, then we take public comment on the, on the consent agenda when we get to it. Because after this, we're gonna go into the public hearing, and I would think that the board would benefit more from hearing the public comment before we get to those issues, rather than having public comment for everybody that wants to speak. Then we move into your motion, we complete that business, then we move, then we close, then we, then we adjourn the meeting in order to move into the public hearing on the student progression plan, and then come back to it. So, now, if you want everybody to make public comment now, and then we'll take up your motion, then we'll adjourn the meeting, move into the public hearing, then close it, and move right into the consent agenda, we can do that.
It doesn't really matter either way, because they're right next to each other. So, I didn't really care if they spoke at public comment, or if they spoke at the motion. It doesn't really matter. I just wanted to make sure that they had a right to speak.
Oh, absolutely.
That's all I'm asking.
Absolutely. So, why don't we do this? Are there any members of the audience that have signed up for public comment related to the motion to rescind the naming of the North County High School? If those, if there are members that have signed up, then Madam Vice Chair, would you like to hear their public comments before we take up your motion?
What? I'd like, I have a list. Can I just go down the list and see if that's what they came to speak on? But then, if they didn't come to speak on that, and they came to speak on just regular public comment, you're saying-
After the public hearing, before we get to that, those items.
That is not the agenda we just approved.
I'm looking at new business, the motion to rescind, then after that, we're gonna close the regular meeting and open up a public hearing.
Right, but that's just for the student progression plan. Public comment comes before all of that.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just saying, that's what we just approved.
Well, I thought the public hearing, they would make comments regarding the student progression plan when we get to that item.
And that's, I, I saw one person sign up for that. I'm, I'm not saying that there's not, I'm just-
Why don't we just let them comment on both?
All right, that's fine. That's fine.
It doesn't really matter which way it happens.
It's, it's up to you, the Vice Chair. You're responsible for public comments. However you would like to handle it is fine with me.
I just wanna follow the agenda.
Okay.
I'm just gonna give my spiel about public comment. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not a forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. This is a business meeting of the school board, and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond. Enter into debate or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, I'm gonna start with Mr. Rick Murphy. Next, Andre Perron. On the school naming? Got it.
Thank you.
That is, or five. Iris McLean, would you like to make it? If you'd like to make your comment during the renaming agenda item, you can also do that instead. Would you rather do it now or later? Doesn't really matter. They're really right next to each other on the agenda. The same. It does not matter whichever, they're, it's, it's the next thing on the agenda, so whichever way you'd like to do it.
Okay, let's get it, let's get it going.
Let's get it going, I agree.
Okay. Iris McLean, I've lived in Parrish for 45 years. I've raised two sons in Parrish. They went to school from the beginning to the end, graduating from Palmetto High. I think it's a great thing having a high school in Parrish. My grandchildren and my great-grandchildren are going to school as close to Parrish as they can get. For many years, we had to transport our kids out of Parrish to go to school. Now, they can go right down the road to the high schools, and they are very happy about being able to do that. So, I really and truly encourage that we have our school named Parrish High School or Parrish Community High School, anything that would make our children proud to go to that school. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Vaughn. And after Tammy Vaughn will be Norm Nelson.
I'm going with what Iris said. Let's get it over with. Good evening. I've been a resident of Parrish for over 15 years. I have been on the board of the Parrish Civic Association for nearly that long. And during that time, the PCA has represented the wishes of the community on many different occasions. But tonight, I do not speak as a board member of the PCA, I speak as a resident of Parrish. Mr. Neal is fond of telling people that the land where the high school sits was once owned by Neal Communities, and that I led the community in pointing out that the development was too dense and the roads inadequate to handle the increased traffic. So, Mr. Neal sold the property to the school board, and now we are stuck with a high school in its place. But that doesn't give Mr. Neal the right to help us decide what to call it. If we're going to be stuck with a high school there, we should at least have some say in what that high school will be named. The school board has stalled and rescheduled for weeks now. I'm not sure if it's because of the upcoming election, but as far as the people of Parrish are concerned, that ship has sailed. Or maybe it's to give the construction company time to create something that cannot be changed. Let me assure you that should a sign already have been created with a name, we will have an immediate fundraiser and donate the money to rebuild the sign. So, that's not going to work either. For too many years now, the commissioners and the school board have ignored the wishes of the community. It's time to start listening again.
Thank you. Norman Nelson. Okay. Mr. Gibbelina. Okay. New business. I have you under old business number one. Do you have any new business that you choose to speak on, too?
Oh, you have public comment coming up under public hearing, right?
Oh, you're gonna speak at that new business item? Okay, gotcha. Number five. Amanda Romant.
Is it appropriate to talk about school events now during public comment?
That, yes, public comment is when you would speak about those things.
Can I have a little handout for everybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Romant. I'm here as one of the representatives from Copperstone to ask the school board to reevaluate the existing planned entrance for the Barbara A. Harvey Elementary School. Dr. Hopes and Pat Neal visited Copperstone twice, once in June and again in July, and offered to reroute the bus queue, not the cars, to the other side of the school. At each meeting, residents attempted to explain how little this would do to relieve the congestion. Our entrance and gates allow for one car at a time. That's, may not be perfect scale, but that's accurate as far as how many cars can come out at one time from our community. There's a large iron gate that slowly swings open, and then an arm raises, and between the gate and the turner to the school is enough for just two cars. That means that we will have a car line outside the gate and one inside the gate, where residents will wait an extra 10 to 20 minutes, one car at a time, to leave for work every day. Copperstone has 622 homes, and almost every household has two cars. So, that's potentially 1,200 cars trying to leave every day. Obviously, 622 households have not descended upon the school board yet. But I'm confident that if this plan doesn't change, and this daily gridlock isn't avoided, not only will the school board hear from a much larger portion of our 622 households, they will also hear from the families who drive their kids to that school every day, which may eventually include our future neighbors in the new Neal community across the street. When Dr. Hopes came to Copperstone, he alluded to the possibility of additional research, a need for more discussion, as well as possibly a traffic engineer. I'm not sure that we need all of that, because it's pretty obvious how bad it's gonna be without a study or any more assessment. Regardless of any, what any one developer wants, or how prior boards may have poorly planned or insufficiently budgeted, we are all here now. As you already know, Parrish may just be a village, but we have a passionate and persistent voice that's not going to go away until it's heard. Please help us look at these existing plans and find an alternative. Thank you.
Normally, I wouldn't respond. Those individual professions that we're referring to are not to do a study, they are to develop a solution to be able to route all the traffic away from gates.
Okay, this is the first time I've heard "all." Both other meetings, you said buses-
The goal has, the goal has been, the goal has been to reroute the traffic. It's incremental, we do not have one solution. And the Chair of the County Commission attended one of those meetings as well, because the county has jurisdiction over Moccasen Wallow. And so, we are working on it. We are diligently, many parties are working on doing all that can be done, including a grant from the governor to widen Moccasen Wallow, so before the school opens, we can mitigate the issues that we're trying to address. So, I want to assure you, the residents of Copperstone, that many parties are working on this.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, I just have not heard any of that until today, including last email.
And we are trying to update the community as we continue to make progress.
Okay. So, can you, will that come out in writing in a response at some point?
Yeah, we, we've got the application filed with the governor's office to get the additional money that the county doesn't have, to be able to widen the road so they can enter off of Moccasen Wallow instead of the entrance to your gate. We will keep you apprised of that.
Great.
We're working on it. Thank you.
Anthony Shusulo. This is your second time here, I should be able to say your name better. I apologize.
Yeah, just about right, just about right.
All right. My maiden name's Bushilio, see, so I can do this.
Yeah, I've been called worse, at least. So, good evening again to all of you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak again. My name's Anthony Shusulo, you were very close. I'm a Parrish resident, I have two children in elementary school, and I'm a resident of Copperstone. So, my comments, by the way, are kinda commingled with a little bit of this naming and some of this stuff about the entrance to Copperstone. I'd like to say I appreciate the last-minute scurry and support our community has received from Dr. Hopes and by others like Mr. Mike Penley of your staff. I appreciate that, I genuinely do. But, I'm concerned and confused about planning and public notices, the lack of proac, excuse me, the lack of proactivity with community-impacted projects, school sites being one of them, names of schools would be another example that are on the agenda today. Are you all or your staffs ignoring or taking advantage of the county's inability to deny your plans? Because the county is unable to deny the plans at your sites. So, I'm just asking that to ponder for a second. We still are not satisfied, as the previous speaker said, with the site traffic plans. I understand that that is an effort that you're working on, and we've asked you to do that, and you've responded with those comments that you're trying. The salacious details that you're providing here are very vague, so I can't even say that, they're details and vague, that wouldn't really make sense. You're all educators, right? But to throw that out there without anything firm, it doesn't make it a good idea for us to not get on record once more and say, again, we are still not satisfied with the traffic plans there. And I know that that's a community effort, there's other owners, there's other property folks involved. Again, the lack of planning has created, in my opinion, a false emergency with roads and infrastructure in our corner of this community, of this county. Public comments seem to go unheard for naming conventions of schools and for traffic patterns. This all seems like a knee-jerk reaction to the flavor of the day. That seems fiscally irresponsible, and I would like to hope that you're addressing it. And when I say fiscally responsible, when infrastructure changes happen, when we need more paramedics, fire rescue, water, sewer, any of these things, that all comes out of the tax dollar that we, that we pay. Now, I love the schools here, that's why we moved here. But again, I don't know if your planners are planning accurately, or they're providing you the information you need to make an educated decision, because transfers and the churn happens with elections. So, I would just ask you to look into what information you're getting, and I thank you again.
Thank you. James Greer.
I think that was supposed to be Denise Greer. He's not here, he's my husband, I know him.
Are you going to speak for him, as most wives do?
I'm Denise Greer, and I signed up as Denise Greer, so I don't know what happened.
I don't have that, but-
Okay.
Go for it.
So, I'm a Parrish resident, I'm also on the Parrish Civic Association board, and I'm just here to reiterate what others have told you, that the Parrish population would really like to see the high school named Parrish High School. When I ask students, how do you call out your high school, they say, "We went to Palmetto, we go to Vanatee." They don't ever use the PHS, and I've heard that that's a reason why you don't wanna make it Parrish, because we already have a PHS. Most of us think that's a really lame excuse. They say Palmetto. All three of my kids and my husband, James, went to Palmetto High School, and there are teachers from Palmetto in the crowd, and they do a wonderful job at Palmetto, there's great teachers there. So, I hope Parrish High School is just as successful as Palmetto has been.
Thank you. Mimi Schaffer. And then after Mimi is, I have Bridget Mendel.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mimi Sheffer, and I've lived in Parish for sixteen, over sixteen years. My husband and I moved to Parish in two thousand and two because there was affordable housing for us, a new, young newly married couple. Over the years, we've had the opportunity to move back to Sarasota where we lived previously, and yet we've stayed. We've seen the parish community flourish and prosper in these past sixteen years, and we've fallen in love with the parish community and her people. We now have children in the community school system, and we have roots that go deep. Parish is a close-knit community with a rich, storied history, full of people who give tirelessly of their time and talent to improve the present and future of Parish and her children. Although I understand why the high school was originally named North River High School, I understand why that name was chosen. I implore you to correct this error and demonstrate to the passionate people of Parish that you, as a board, value the will of the community in which the new school will reside and call the school Parish High School. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bridget, I also have you down for the public hearing.
Yes.
You wanna speak for public comment or public hearing, or both?
Public comment for I Ready and public hearing for the...
Okay, come on down.
Okay, I'm just gonna summarize a few things. Um, I'm gonna read you from a research study from Johns Hopkins College of Education Institute on Research regarding I Ready. We have two researchers that have conducted numerous analyses of I Ready assessments. Unfortunately, parties associated with the publisher of these assessments have authored the studies, which inevitably calls objectivity into question. For example, Curriculum Associates, which owns I Ready, hired Education Research Institute of America to evaluate, to evaluate the tool, and it used its own in-house researchers to conduct validity research. The resulting research has not been published in peer-reviewed journals. Completely impartial, peer-reviewed research is obviously preferable. So, that's from Johns Hopkins in regard to I Ready not being peer-reviewed. I also have something from, uh, legal briefs from LD Online, Resource for Teachers. There's a teacher who said his, his district asked him to teach with a product that was not peer-reviewed or impartially researched. The legal advice was, under both No Child Left Behind, which applies to all students, and IDEA, which applies specifically to students in special ed, schools are required to provide peer-reviewed, scientifically validated instructional programs to the extent practicable. Equally important, under the IDEA, schools are required to provide specialized instruction, et cetera, et cetera. You, teacher, could potentially file a complaint with the Office of the Civil Rights for a violation of Section 504, which also, also requires the provision of FAP, uh, Free and Appropriate Public Education for All. So, you're putting your teachers at risk for being able to file a civil rights violation. In addition, rights law in regard to, uh, parents' and children's rights. Congress added new language to the definition of IEP, Section fourteen fourteen. IEPs must include a statement of special education and related services and supplementary aids and services based on peer-reviewed research. The statement that special education and services and supplementary aids are based on peer-reviewed research to the extent practicable, to be provided to the child or on behalf of the child, and the statement of the program modifications or supports that the school personnel will be provided for the child in regard to I Ready use. I also have a series of emails between a Sarasota County parent and the company, Curriculum Associates. For example, the parent said, "My child has dyslexia and an IEP. Is this an appropriate peer-reviewed, um, resource?" And I Ready said, "No, um, we don't have specific published research available for I Ready's effectiveness for students with dyslexia, because we do not have an adequate sample size to draw valid conclusions. Thus is why we pay. Our students are the product. They are coming up with the sample size that I Ready is using to look, to for, because they do not want to invest in the research and development to test the product before it goes to market." So, this is a perfect example of, uh, Deana Nyman, account manager from Curriculum Associates, in stating this. She also says that, um, I, she currently does support...
Thank you.
You get where I'm going with that one. Thank you.
Heather Wallace, I have you sign up for old business and also public comment.
Uh, can I do two under old business, three and four?
Yes, that's what I have. And I also have another one, so I just didn't know.
Uh, I'm good, I'll just do old business.
Okay. Larry Parish, and then after Larry Parish is Amy Tran.
I'm Larry Parish, and how y'all doing? I, uh, last week, when I stood up here and I talked to y'all about unity and that we need to bring this thing together, and we needed to talk about a school with a, with a name that reflected the community. I learned this last week that a lot of things changed, and I, and then I'm up here tonight to defend my family name. And my daddy's name was, was John Preston Parish. His daddy's name was John, and my, was my granddaddy, and I told you last week, John Parish was my, was also my great-grandfather. The town was named after him. He never owned any, any slaves in his life. And, and all he did was good for this, for that community. And that's what, and I'm here to tell you that today, and my daddy was in agriculture all his life, and he had me out there working with these, these men, these good men. I worked with, with Willie J. I worked with Money. I worked with Bobby. I worked with Warren Covington. His sister, Eunice, attended my daddy's, along with a lot of others, attended my daddy's funeral. I worked with Raymond Riley, and my mo, my sister and I, my mother required us to call him Mr. Raymond. That's, you know, and then I, and I, and I'm seeing this stuff this week, I can't believe that. And, uh, and I'm disappointed by it. And, and Eunice cried over my daddy's grave, and she called my, my mother every week, and she cried again, and my mother had to console her, after my mother had lost, because she was that important to our family. Tonight, Eunice is crying, has this week, along with my daddy, my granddaddy, and my great-grandfather, and what they've heard and what they've read in the paper, and I just wish that the documents that you've been provided, that you look at those and you make sure that you understand what you're seeing in nineteen eighteen, when that Tampa Tribune article was written. We didn't have any of this discussion at that time, and those people were, were writing about it was what was, was in that time and in that day, and they would've sure put that down there, because they did on everything else, if there was any fact to anything like that. And I appreciate you giving me one more opportunity to talk about this, and I hope you consider that when you start trying to name this, this school out there, and something other than somebody's, uh, financial gain, because we have no financial, the parish just have no financial gain in it. Thank you very much.
Just a second.
Yes, sir.
I'm confused.
I'm hard of hearing now.
I, I'm, I'm confused. I don't know what has changed since last week. I'm in the dark about...
Robo-calls and some other things, and you know, you didn't, you know, there was other things that was happening about, and robo-calls and trying to, 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 uh, that happened in Parish, Doctor.
This, this past week?
Callouts and people...
This past week?
I didn't get one. I didn't get one.
Okay.
But those are the things that's happened, and that's, that's just, that's ridiculous. This is not about that. We can come together and talk about this, just like I tried to do last week. And then I, then I get hit slapped in the face with this kinda stuff, and I'm disappointed by it. And I hope that y'all, y'all, I hope y'all look at the facts when you do this, and not, not innuendo and what somebody thinks about somebody else, or what they think it might been, or what, what could be, or what might be in the future, and, and we can't do this because of that, and all these other things. Do, let's look at the facts. I'm a, I'm retired state trooper. I dealt with the facts all my life. There's people still in Rayford because of the facts that I, that I provided to a state attorney and a, and a, and a, and a state prosecutors. And, uh, I'm, I'm used to dealing with facts and not innuendo and not, not something that somebody supposes or, or wishes, because it might be good for them. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate you coming down.
Amy Tran, and then John Neal. Who's on? I'll, I'll do them at the end.
Hello. My name's Amy Tran. I wanted to talk about the entrance to the school. I'm a resident of Copperstone. I wanna thank Dr. Hopes and Gina Messenger. They've met us out on site, and Mr. Pat Neal has also met, and I hope that we'll continue that relationship and be able to progress further, and maybe if the board would see fit to allow us to work with the planners that could, um, speak with the residents of Copperstone that would be affected, and maybe Mr. Neal would like to meet with us as well, if we could get a combined meeting, um, to, to go forward with that. And I also agree with if you could, um, compromise and put Parish into the high school. There's a lot of passionate people of Parish. I hope you'll see it's really important to them to somehow work that in as well. Thank you.
John Neal? Do you wanna speak now, or would you like to speak when?
I'll wait for the item.
Item, okay. Mr. Pat Neal, waiting. Linda Stewart Tucker?
I'd like to wait till the end, please.
Okay. Gretchen Fowler?
I'll wait.
Priscilla? And after Priscilla will be Rhonda Rivera.
I'm gonna go ahead and speak now, because everybody says I'm a straight shooter, so I want you to know. North River is from Sneed Island to Duette, north of the river. We don't consider Parish north of the river. We consider Parish Parish. This is a community issue. We do not want to be known as North River Ranch. We're Parish. We've had the name much longer than Lakewood Ranch has had the name. Fact is, a lot of the places, and I'm no longer gonna call it north of the river, I'm gonna call it the north part of the county, 'cause y'all obviously get confused. Gillette's one of the oldest communities in the county. And, uh, we have lost Gillette, because we no longer have a school in Gillette. Used to be Gillette Elementary. Some of these folks' relatives used to teach there. Know that for a fact. Used to go to the fair, and there was a booth for every community in the county. Palmasola, Cortez, the Islands, Sammaset, Onico, Palmetto, Ellington, Duette, Maica. How many of y'all that haven't been here, as long as some of us have, even know where even these cities are? Even know where Palmasol is? Did y'all know that that was a legitimate community? Did y'all know that they had a vibrant tropical fruit and palm tree business? Cortez still, um, fighting very hard to keep their identity, which they had to do with fight, it's, you know, the last fishing community in here. Parish does not want to be known as North River. Are y'all confused? We do not want the name North River. So, in case there was any confusion, I just wanted to make sure y'all did understand that. We would like Parish High School. And Mr. Neal, you did see, he said, "I was in charge of Moccasen Wallow." You got that, didn't you?
Rhonda Rivera? I'm...
I was not able to sign up to talk.
You were not able to sign up?
No, to say I couldn't. Over there, I think it's wrong.
Okay, let me have Rhonda go, and then we'll, we'll talk about it, figure out what happened.
Hi, my name's Rhonda Rivera, and I'm the branch manager of Premier Community Bank in Parish, as well as a longtime resident of Parish, and I'm here today just on behalf of myself, as well as all the employees of the community bank, um, for the Parish High School. So, we really, the community, having a community bank as well in Parish, we are, um, we are just all for the, for naming it Parish High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I, first of all, Rick Murphy was not here earlier when I called, but, um, if you'd like to come up, um, would you like to speak, if you want to speak on the next item where it's about renaming the school, you can wait, or you can go now? Okay? And then the other, I have, there's no more people?
Before I get, after I do that list. Um, we have Mr. Alan Jones and Ms. Debbie Dyke.
Is that either my...
No, my name is...
This lady is saying that she tried to sign up and could not successfully do it?
Right, she came up after the meeting had started.
Oh, okay.
And if you don't sign up before five forty-five, the...
Unfortunately, that's, that is our policy, that is the rule. It has to be five forty-five or before.
There are two names, what time did they come in? I'm not trying to give you a hassle, but I'm just saying...
Do you know what time these other two names came in? The system only allows until five forty-five, and then I think it shuts it off and won't let anybody sign up after that, so if they're in the system, then it's because they were here before the time that they were supposed to be in.
No big deal.
I apologize. Um, Alan Jones?
I'll wait for the agenda.
Okay. And Debbie Dyke?
I'll wait also.
Okay, well, then that concludes public comment. Okay, as long as there's a consensus from the board. I don't know.
Yeah.
Was it, was it about the naming of the school, or was it...
Yes, yes.
You wanna speak?
Do you wanna speak now, or do you wanna wait until we get to the next item?
Well, I can speak now, if you don't make any...
It'll be, it'll be in like three minutes.
I don't, hey, yeah, I know. I've been here before.
That's fine, if you would like to speak now, before we get to the item, it's on.
Yes, yes, I really would like to, if you don't mind.
Is there an objection I can make?
No, I don't have an objection.
If you don't mind, will, if you say your name and spell it for our, um...
Yeah, everybody's supposed to speak. Hi, my name is Veda Sales Rose, and...
Can you spell it for her, I'm sorry?
R-H-O-D-E-S. Daddy? Yes, okay. Now, everybody, I'm just, it's puzzling me that how someone, a group can come back and rescind where they already, months ago, saying for North River High School, and you let a group come in and change y'all mind and everything? Listen, when that school is being built and opened in two thousand and nineteen, Parish Kids is not the only one gonna go there. You're gonna come and get it all from in my area where I live at in Palmetto. So, what you gonna say, what we have to say about it? It's supposed to be North River High School. We don't worry about other schools, what their name was. Hey, I graduated from Lincoln Memorial High School fifty-one years ago. Uh, was the name Palmetto-Lincoln? No. So, what difference does it make? You as a board gonna let a group of people come here, I don't care who it is, and I'm not trying to be biased or anything, and change their mind? As long as I've been here in Manatee County, I have never saw a school board rescind because other group of people come here and talk about it. And that's the bottom line, and I'm letting you know now, as a group, I am in the committee. I am. And the school's supposed to be North River High School. Now, if that's the case, let our kids stay in their neighborhood. You talking about your kids can go right down the street? Our kids can't. They gotta get on that bus to go out to Parish. So, why are you changing, because just a group of people wanna change it? No, we don't go along with it. We as parents, we stand up for our rights. If in North River High School that was named, if they had anything to say, when they was going through the naming of other schools, they should've stated then. They can't come back here and let either, I'm not saying you, Hope, I'm not saying you, come back to you and bring this item back up. No, it's not right. It's not right for us as people, to let a group of people come back up here and say Parish. I don't worry when I go to a fair, go see Palmasol or whatever. No, I go to do what I wanna do, entertain myself, but the school's supposed to stay North River High School, no parish, 'cause ain't none of our kids, just a group, gonna be on that bus going out to Parish High School in two thousand and nineteen. And that's the bottom line. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you. Before we, we get to the item, and this is related to the item, um, as you recall, the, uh, I called for a short recess after we put this item on the agenda, and there had been some public inquiries about what occurred during that recess, so I'd like to give you a little bit of background. The, the, the item, the motion to rescind the naming of the school, a request was made on Thursday before the board meeting to add that item. Within a, a short period of time, an hour or so, I informed the clerk that I indeed would put the, the new item on the agenda, and then within another hour, to the, the board member that requested the item be put on the agenda, withdrew the request to put the item on the agenda. So, staff stopped all work in preparing for the agenda item. The lawyers stopped all review of policy related to the item, because I and the staff... because I and the staff were led to believe that the item was not going to come up on Tuesday's meeting. So, when the motion was made to amend the agenda, to put the item on the agenda, I knew that staff had not completed their review of, of issues related to a possible change of the name of the high school. The attorneys had not thoroughly reviewed both our policies around naming of the school because we passed, the board passed a very large voluminous change to our policies late last year. And so, I called the recess to have the attorneys quickly review our board policies, related state statutes. So, I was prepared to be able to conduct the, the hearing on the motion. There were a number of parties in the room that I had been working with, and I think other members had been working with, that had a vested interest. Community members in Parish. I met in, in someone's home. I met with the chair of the county commission. I met with representatives of Neal, a number, to find out if there was a, a, a resolution to the issue of the naming. I did indeed gather up those folks and take them upstairs to find out who knew about this item coming up at the last minute, when staff was not prepared, the attorneys were not prepared, and to ask the relative parties if there was a solution to this issue. Upon determining there was not a solution to the issue, I went downstairs, stopped at the third floor, was informed by a number of people scurrying around that there were vapors coming from the server room and the fire department had been called. So, that's what took place during the, the recess. Now that we know the item was going to be taken back up and we reconvened, the, the respective attorneys, the board's general counsel, the district's general counsel have reviewed the policy. So, I just wanted, because there was a lot of public inquiry about what was going on when some of us were upstairs and the attorneys were meeting in the back. It was to prepare, to prepare for hearing the motion. And, and that's something that, an issue of this size and scope with the vested interest of the public, I prefer to be prepared thoroughly before we, we move forward with those items. So, that's what was taking place. So, with that, we are now on, I believe it was Vice Chair Messenger's motion. The clerk, could you refresh my memory? Who made the motion and who's?
Mr. Chair.
The, the motion was added to the agenda and we had not called the motion up yet before we recessed, correct?
Correct. Well, Ms. Messenger made the motion. It was seconded, I believe, by Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, for the motion to rescind. And amend the agenda. So, now we are on the new business item, number one. A motion to rescind the decision to name the North County High School North River. And I will move to Vice Chair Messenger to make the, the, the motion.
Before that, I'd like to just add that it's this board's determination if there's a solution, not any other party that might have met somewhere during a recess.
Uh, yes, it is. But as individual board members, and I'm sure you've had discussions with people in Parish too, independent of the board.
Not to make a deal, not to find any other kind of solution, to hear what they have to say. That's my job.
Okay, all right. There were no deals made. You see me making a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Just a second, Mr. Minor.
Motion to rescind the decision to name North County High School North River.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Minor has seconded. Do we have public comment? Mike, Mike, Mike.
I would like to make, to make a motion to amend this item. Really, this is kind of for the sake of discussion. I don't know where this thing is gonna end up tonight, but we can just, we can just start off with this. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the following. And I'll just repeat the motion. Motion to rescind the decision to name the North County High School North River and to name the school North River-Parish High School. Again, let me repeat.
I think we heard there is a, is there a second? Is, is there a second to Mr. Kennedy's motion? Hearing none. Mr. Kennedy, your motion to amend the motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have public comment?
I'd like to shot. All right, I will start with Mr. Rick Murphy. And after Rick Murphy will be Andre Perron. And all the typical spiel that I just said before, y'all heard it already once. I don't think I need to say it again.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the Board. Appreciate the time to speak. Like I spoke before, I really think that when I made decisions as a board member and superintendent for years, I made them based on the people and also the employees of the district's best interest. I really think that North River is not the name for that school. I did offer comments to people in the process last time. They weren't taken up. I suggested Parish High School or Parish Community High School. The reason I say community is because it serves the whole community. Now, as far as Palmetto, Lakewood Ranch and so on, I think the board and their five-year plan that they're working on constantly, what has to be updated, needs to go ahead and use the capital outlay dollars you're getting from the one mill and expand those schools or remodel them. So, students don't have to transfer unless there's a hardship or a bullying situation or whatever. So, North River can be Parish High School or Parish Community High School because Parish Community High School does incorporate the entire community plus an adult school opportunity. But it's the board's pleasure. Parish High School is the right thing, I think, but you can look at it two ways. My suggestion would be to reconsider the name, take the input. Maybe look at, if you're gonna bring ninth and 10th graders in, your growth is out this way, so there's definitely a need for Parish High School. There's also a traffic problem that needs to be talked about with the county. That's a big issue. When you come out of Buffalo Creek and Mills, it's a nightmare.
This, this is specifically about just the renaming.
I understand. So, so when you get into that process, the five-year plan should feed into that because you're gonna talk about expanding Palmetto High School, Lakewood Ranch and so on. So, that's my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Andre?
Good evening. My name's Andre Perron. I work with the Barnes Walker Law Firm. Thank you for taking time today to hear from me. I'm here to sell one message, to tell you of one message. Rules matter. We spent a significant amount of time, my firm and my people, looking at the June 2017 amendments that went through. We looked at the statutory construct under 1001, Florida statutes 1001, and all the other statutes that follow. And in looking at that, it is our opinion, in our view, that you have to follow the rules here. And we submit you are not following the rules by taking this under emotion. There is a procedure for naming a high school. And the statutes talk about you can name and then you can rename a high school. You don't get to go back and rescind and do things like that. You have the rules that are in place that talk about that if you're gonna rename a high school, and I would submit that's what's happening here today, is you're talking about renaming a high school. And if you're gonna rename that high school, you then have to go back to go. And it is important. Why is it important? Because the statutory construct, the rule construct that these boards have adopted is designed for transparency, is designed for fairness, is designed for community involvement when you look at 7320 and the other rules that apply here. And so, when you take it out of that realm and you start backing up and going backwards here and trying to do something that's not contemplated under these rules, you're denying the people the opportunity to participate in the process and you are, in essence, violating your own rules. So, I ask you to consider that you're setting precedent here on how you're approaching this problem and many problems to come in the future. And if you can start with deviating from your rules, bit by bit, piece by piece, as I'm suggesting is happening here today, then you're gonna undermine the system itself. And more importantly, it's the transparency that's built into this construct that's been created that you are undermining as well. I would ask, I'm gonna be filing a letter with the board that I'm gonna read into the record. Please be advised that the undersigned contends that the proposed renaming of the duly adopted North River High School will violate the rules and procedures of the school board. We further to submit that any such change will further violate administrative due process rights under applicable Florida statutes as referenced in the rules. If necessary, my clients have authorized me to take appropriately galaxium to protect their respective interests. I ask that you think carefully about what you're chipping away at here. And once you open the door, you open the floodgates. And you are duly elected to follow the rules. You are duly elected to follow the statutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Jivalina? We're under the rescinding of the name. You told me that's what you wanted to speak on. Am I, did I misunderstand you? Okay. Then I have John Neal. And after John Neal, I have Pat Neal.
Hello, board members. My name is John Neal. 11855 Moccasin Wall Road, Parish, Florida, 34219. I've been listening to hear to some things wrongly attributed to me and to Pat Neal. I think it's just not fair. It was this board's decision, this board's decision. He voted 5-0 to name the school North River Ranch. North, North, North River High School. It's okay.
Okay, our policy says that the audience will remain quiet and respectful. Thank you.
Well, it's telling, actually, because I'm a large property owner in the area and I, and I relied on that decision. I make financial, business-oriented decisions based on the reliance of this board, that this board would follow its rules and not have some surprise rescission. I'm okay to talk about the name and I'm actually for the Village of Parish. I've been associated with the Village of Parish since 1990 when my grandfather bought property, the Golden Pheasant Hunting Ranch. I used to come up here as a kid. I learned to drive up here on this property. I, I have a affinity for the community. But I think that we would be better served to serve the parishes and the community in a, in a way that we honor forefathers, a plaque, a monument, a statue. And, and, and I'm, I'm open to helping. But I think that the school board and previous boards before you avoided naming things after people because people have faults. People have faults. I have faults. We all have faults. And I think it's a mistake to make a $93 million public investment over, over and above the investment which I have made in reliance on your decisions and just to change it willy-nilly. Now, I can see, Mr. Minor, that you don't agree. But, but I'm, I'm going to. Well, we can all raise our hands, Mr. Minor. We can all raise our hands. I'm raising my hands because I was here at a duly noted meeting where five of you voted in favor. And now I'm back here again defending the same decision. I'm defending your decision, which seems obtuse and odd to me. So, let's honor the parishes in a way that communities honor their forefathers. Let's leave the name, let's leave the school board to, to make other decisions more pressing than this. And let's not go around and around on this, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat Neal? And then after Pat Neal, Linda Stewart Tucker.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. I'm Pat Neal. The people of Parish, and most particularly Priscilla Trace and Gretchen Fowler and Norman, Norman Kennedy, have conducted themselves with great dignity and integrity on this country, on this contentious issue. Mrs. Fowler in particular has called me to tell me the changes they're gonna make. They called me to say they were gonna be people today. And they have been very dignified and proper in their actions. Number two. Our belief is that this $93 million public investment is for the people of Manatee County and particularly for the people of North Manatee County, not necessarily for the 800 people in the Village of Parish. Third, I'll just read your rules. This is from your section 7320. However, should the board subsequently initiate or be called upon to consider a name change of an existing or previously named school, then in that event, the board shall allow a period of time of not less than six months from that date for community involvement, deliberation, discussion, and debate prior to taking action. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Stewart Tucker? And after Linda, Gretchen Fowler.
This isn't coming out of my time, is it?
Hasn't started yet.
You should be. We ready?
Are you?
Oh, always. Thank you all for hearing from me once again. Again, I'm Linda Stewart Tucker. Six generations in Manatee County on my mother's side and seven on my daddy's. So, I too am a longtime resident of Parish. And I don't know what the Neils consider large. But we do have a ranch in Parish. We've, my grandparents, my great-grandparents, many generations of my family have farmed and ranch property all over Manatee County and especially in Parish. And I've been disturbed by the way these proceedings have gone on. I would like to first of all ask the board that no one person who's in this room, no matter what his station in life or his job, be granted any more power, privilege, or consideration than any other. I would also like to say that it's my understanding, when you, my parents have given land away to various interests. And it's my understanding that once you give a gift, you're done with it. You take your hands off of it. You don't give a gift and then say, "Now, this is a gift, but I want this to be done with it, this, this, or this." So, I have found that concerning as ways, as well as some of the things that went on during the recess last week. The other thing I'd like to say is that, and obviously it is not a group of people or a little cabal who's come down here to say, "We want Parish Methodist." This is the name of a community. And some of us have been there or we have had family there for generations. And that's what we're looking to name the school for, the community, not a person. The last thing I'd like to say, I'd just like to mention, because a lot of people don't know this. There is one public park in Parish. Beautiful, beautiful park. Shaded parking lot, little, little something looks like a birdhouse with books in it. Giveaway for free, anybody can take one. Swings, childhood equipment.
This is only to speak on the name, the rescission of the name.
Oh, all right, then I'll skip that. I invite you to look up the name of the park because it's a real tribute to the kind of people who make Parish their home. There is right and there's wrong. And the right thing to do for the, for all the residents of the community, not just the people in Parish proper, is to name this school Parish Community High School. And I ask you, I humbly ask you to give that consideration and do whatever you have to legally to make that possible. Thank you again for allowing me to speak and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you. Gretchen? And after Gretchen will be Alan Jones.
Hello again.
You have your T-shirt.
I, you know what? I have it sitting out there, so you can look at it. Everybody in the audience can look at it. They'll hold it up for you. I would like to say, how many people here are representative of the Parish family? Raise your hand. They have come here, not just from here in Parish, but also from around the state to defend their name. I was asked to come and help a group of people. I was asked to help them be heard. I started this process once I was asked, "What happened? How did this become North River?" Back in November of 2017. We asked in 2016- We asked in 2016 for the name to be named, the school to be named after Parish. We looked at all the, everybody's talking about how much they wanted it to be named Parish. And that was our mistake. We assumed that the board would do the right thing and name it Parish High School. Bad on us. What we are doing now is turning around and saying, what can we do to get this fixed? What can you do as a board to fix something that was wrongly done, in our opinion? And, you know, the Parish Village, they don't like the Parish Village name. I don't think that's a, I think it's more, they like to refer to it as Parish a town. Parish Village proper was mentioned. There are, I think the last number I had was 21,000 people in the 34219 area. Not 800. And of all the precincts in Manatee County, we are third for the numbers. We are standing here as a people. I am not me. It's not me asking you. I have 1,300 signatures. I have people calling. I have people sending emails. I have people putting posts out there saying, somebody help us be heard. And that's why I'm standing here, because I'm here for them as a community, as a people who brought Parish and made Parish that community. And without community, you don't have buy-in to your schools and support. And we need to rally as a community around this school. This is an awesome thing. My son asked to come speak on behalf, and I told him I really didn't want it. I don't like when people use their kids to do things. So, he did ask if he could. And his reasoning behind that, he goes, he's going to be going to that high school. He will be going to that high school. And he said to me, why wouldn't they name it Parish High School? He was genuinely confused. So, with that, just please reconsider the motion. And yes, there's a lot of legalese. They had to call in the lawyers because that's what they had to do. But to rescind, this name was a motion. It was a motion that's been rescinded and reconsidered. And that's all we're asking you to do.
Thank you. Alan Jones and then Debbie Dyke.
How are y'all doing this afternoon?
Good, how are you?
Alan Jones, Jones Potato Farm. I own a lot of property up in the Parish area and economic supporter of the Parish community and employ a lot of people in the Parish community and have been for many, many years. And so anyhow, I came to Manatee County in 1985 and, and, you know, I'm transient. I was, I was a transplant, like many people. And so, I got to know the Parish community. And I've really invested my lifetime and my efforts to help Parish turn into what it can be. You know, understanding where we are, but where we're going is two different places. And we're really looking forward to great positive things coming for the Village of Parish in the future. Very excited about the high school, the grammar school, and South State College of Florida coming to Parish. So, we've got a lot of opportunities coming our way and a lot of employment opportunities. So, I was, I came to my question in my mind, well, where does North River come from? Where does that statement come from? Because I've been in Parish a long time and I never, ever heard anybody say, I'm from North River. And so, I think it came to point to me that I started thinking about it. When people talked about they were from Parish and you talk to somebody who was from south of the river that had no idea where Parish may be, they would say, oh, well, that's up north of the river. That's North River. And so, when you get into situations where people are transplants, are not familiar with the community, have not lived in the community, have, don't spend every day in these communities, it's, and they make decisions about what something's going to be named. I think there's some misconceptions there. People get upset because we're Parish proud, we're Manatee County proud. We're, we're very proud, hard-working people. There's 25,000 people that live in 34219 area code, which is Parish. It's growing at 5% annually. 1,200 people a year move to Parish. They don't move to North River. Where is North River? We're proud of Parish and the high school needs to be named Parish High School. Thank you.
Last but not least is Debbie Dyke.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I don't live in Parish. I have a lot of good friends that live in Parish. I lead a homeschool support group that has a lot of people in Parish. We have a small group. It's called North River. Our North River group covers this entire area. And we have a Parish group which only covers the Parish area. So, even homeschoolers know how to read a map. The zip code 34219 is Parish. The fire district for North River is from this line this way. It is not Parish. The Parish District Fire Department is where the high school would be covered. If something happened, who would be covering it? It would be Parish Fire District, not North River Fire District. I have grandchildren coming up and with school choice, they might want to go to Parish High School. They do live north of the river in Palmetto. And if you'll notice, most of the river is over here under, south of Palmetto, not Parish. So, please, name it Parish. John Parish was a school board member for many years. We've had a number of schools in Manatee County that have been named after board members. Ida Stewart, Barbara Harvey, Marge Canaan. We've had Jean Witt Elementary, who was superintendent. And I used to be a secretary a long time ago. So, those things I know are in elementary schools, but I know in high schools, we name it for the area. Manatee, Palmetto, Braden River, Lakewood Ranch. Not quite sure about southeast, but when it was named, it must have been the southeast part of Bradenton or, I'm not really sure, Samma said, or, or something. But those, our high schools were named for areas and it is Parish area. Then, the name for Parish came after John Parish and his brother brought about the railroad, the post office. And then the townspeople said, we don't want it to be called Oak Hill anymore. You see, the parishes came after the Civil War 140 years ago. And Mr. John Parish died 100 years ago, in 1918. So, I think it's very fitting in 2018 to call it Parish High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I had a lot of things I might have said, but I think everyone has said it for me. For me, this is about a community, wanting it to be named after their community. And it's as simple as that. If our lawyer determines that we need to wait six months while the school doesn't open for another year, I'm willing to wait. We can hold off on all the stuff that has a name on it until then. That doesn't offend me and I don't think it'd offend anybody in this room. If we had to follow those rules, so do it. I'm pretty sure I could find evidence that, that six months ago or at least, that the community, there was community involvement, deliberation, discussion, debate, and prior to taking any action. So, if we were to do it tonight, I think that we could find a way. But I'm not a lawyer, so I will always defer to our lawyer. But I'm, I'm pretty sure I could find that. Nonetheless, I, I support adding Parish to the name of the school. This is purely about a community and I, and I'm really, quite genuinely struggle to understand why this has become so difficult. Our job is to listen to the community. That is our job. Our job is not to worry about one particular business interest. Our job is to make sure we follow the rules. I 100% am a rule follower. I want to follow every single rule we need to follow to make it happen. And I'm, I will get on board with that. And I don't think anybody in this room would not get on board with that because they want the name to be just as legitimate as everybody else does. So, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. But this is about a community. Our job is to listen to the community. People ask, why now? They've gathered strength. They've come together. They've expressed how important this is to them. And our job is to listen to them. That is how our representation works. We represent all of them, not just a few, all. And there is a large overwhelming group that is clear that this is something that they want. So, if there is a way to make that happen, which it sounds like there is, even if we have to wait, I don't see why we wouldn't. That's all I have to say.
Madam Vice Chair, was it your intent in your motion to rescind the motion to name the school? Was it your intent to rename the school?
I eventually think we should get there. My intent was to rescind the decision and to focus on the list that we have already publicly solicited through our process, which at the last meeting when I spoke to Jim Dye, he said that that was a possibility to work on that list that we have already publicly noticed, already publicly gathered. We already have a list.
So, again, just was it, was it your intent in rescinding the motion to name the school North River to possibly change the name of the school?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Mr. Minor, for a comment, for debate, what, what do you rise to speak for?
I rise to speak as a board member elected in this community.
On the motion?
On the motion.
Mr. Minor, Mr. Minor, if, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to discuss what Mr. Pat Neal handed out. I want to applaud Mr. Messenger's comments. And the interpretation I have of what's in here, that if, this board made some, took some action to name a school, and there is some kind of community involvement, deliberation, discussion, and debate, you know, for, you can't take action to change that for at least six months after that starts. And I'm here to represent that very shortly after this, this board, you know, decided initially, you know, to name it North River, I got phone calls. I see people right in here right now. You know, it should be Parish. And that was over six months ago. The six months has passed. The time is appropriate. The time is now, now to move on. It's important that we do name this high school and name it for the community. My concerns with those who, and Mr. John Neal saying, well, it's named for a person and, and this robo-call of, you know, do you know, do you want a school named after a slave owner? And did you know that this...
I didn't say that.
What? No, you didn't say that, but there was a robo-call that went out and I heard it from several people. And my understanding is that it was admitted that it came, you know, from those associated with you. Are you denying that, Pat?
Mr. Minor, will you please speak to the motion? Please, not to the audience. Please speak to the motion.
I am speaking to the audience and I would appreciate the courtesy from the chair for me to continue. Thank you very much. I think that this community has a name and it's Parish. And to go back, and I think it was false history, you know, to say that there was slave home, that these people owned slaves here, I don't think it comports. Even if it did, are we going to punish this community for alleged sins of the past? The law school that I chose to be to, you know, go to when I graduated, served two years on the admissions committee, you know, was on a street named for a slave owner. A slave owner that impregnated at least one of his slaves. I'm proud to have graduated from that school. Didn't bother me. And I think that President Jefferson did a fine job for this country. And we don't hold my law school or others against, for the fact that he at one time owned slaves and impregnated one. That's beside the point. I think that that being brought up as an issue was a real low point in this community. A high point is that we have a community of Parish that takes pride in where they live. And I hope, I would hope, the Neal family, the Neal organization would put their arms around that energy, praise it, take pride in being part of that. I think that time has come. And I think it's time has come, you know, for this board to name it Parish High School. The time is ripe, legally appropriate, and we need to get it done so we can move on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are you finished with your comments? Thank you. Mr. Cologne?
You know, it's interesting. I find it very interesting that the community, which I like Parish, I go out there sometimes. I've been to the railroad out there. I've been to the barbecues and stuff. I, I don't think it's about the community. I think, oh, you're going to tell me it's in Ellington? Oh. I want to know where they were before when we went through this process. We spent considerable time putting this in online, newspapers, periodicals. We, we put it out there. Everybody had a chance to vote. We didn't get many votes for Parish. We got votes for North River. We got votes for Mr. Minor. We got a Charlie Kennedy vote. We got votes for various things. Now, you know, it's interesting that they're coming out now. Mr. Murphy gets up here, nice guy, experienced superintendent. But he wants the school for only Parish community. That's not going to happen. This is going to be a feeder school that's going to have a lot of good programs in it. It's going to bring children from all over the county. It's not going to just serve Parish, no matter what people think. There's over $92 million in taxpayer money from everybody in Manatee County. Our board cannot work on assumptions. We're not clairvoyant. The people should have been, who are, who are saying this now, should have been involved in this process from day one. Not after the fact come back to us and start, oh, well, we don't like that name. The board did not decide this name. The greater Manatee County community did. And they voted. They, they, we solicited votes. We solicited information. And that's what they chose. But now you want to change it? Do you want to change it? I can't vote for it, especially knowing that we have to wait six months. That's not, you know, I'm going to follow the rules because I have no intention of being personally sued for violating state statutes or rules. So, that's my two cents on it. I think it's a community school, yes. The entire Manatee community. We cannot, we don't have time to expand Palmetto, expand Lakewood Ranch, and then send all the kids there. This will be a Manatee school. It will be an integrated school and that's the bottom line. And anybody who thinks differently needs to argue with the federal government because we just came off of an integration issue. And don't forget, this district was under federal watch for many years. Oh, you didn't know? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm done.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um...
Oh, by the way, I'm sorry. Let me finish one more thing. Mr. Kennedy, do you mind?
No, go ahead, Mr. Cologne.
I want to read this because I've already been threatened on this and I like to make my threats real public. Just want to let you know, if the name of the high school doesn't change, the natives will make sure you don't win the election. I know it sounds strange, but I'm from here and know it can hurt people. All of us has or has had a family member from Parish. It's a weird dynamic, just you, just want you aware.
Who said that? Who said that? Then we need you to find that person.
Yeah, well, I'm just letting you know.
Who said it? Who said it?
I'm not going to divulge that right now. But trust me, it's right here. Yes, I agree.
Okay, hold on. Please, 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 it's not, it's not a, okay. Thank you, thank you.
And I'm not faulting the whole Parish community for that. Don't get me wrong.
I too, I-
But I just want to let you know-
Mr. Cologne, Mr. Cologne.
I'm sorry.
I too received the same email. Mr. Kennedy, back to your comments or debate.
Uh, thanks. I, I don't even know where to begin, to be honest, because I came, as I prepared for this meeting, I had a totally different question in my mind, which was the nature of my motion to amend. But really, the question that we're deciding right now is do we restart this process today and then rename the school again in six months? That's all that's up for debate right now. So, um, that's my fault for not being prepared as a board member to have taken into consideration that by rescinding this and starting, restarting the process again, we are setting in motion a six-month process to officially name the school.
No, no, no.
Mr. Kennedy.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I, I'd like to flesh this point out with Mr. Minor real quick because he disagrees.
Uh, Mr. Minor for a response.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't need to fight with the federal government. The statute makes clear that names can be changed for schools. It's good. It's good if you legislate something like we did more than six months ago, that we can pass legislation changing a name to make it better. We can do that. And reading this section that was handed out by Mr. Pat Neal makes clear we can do that. And we can do that at any time after a period of six months from the date of community involvement, which I can represent started almost the day after we came up with this name of North River. Six months has passed. Date of community involvement, deliberation, discussion and debate prior to taking, it's taking action to change the name.
Mr. Minor, you're repeating the comments that you made during-
Well, that's fine, and thank you for allowing me to do that.
I allowed you to respond.
Obviously, I wasn't heard by you or Mr. Cologne.
Mr. Minor, I allowed you to respond to Mr. Kennedy.
I am doing that, and I would appreciate courtesy from the chair to continue doing that.
Our own rules, our own rules are that we go around, each person has five minutes before we go a second round for comments. I gave you the opportunity to merely respond to Mr. Kennedy's-
Okay, and I'm doing that.
And I think, are you finished? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Kennedy?
Miss, did you understand what I'm saying?
I get your point, I disagree with it, though.
Why?
That's fine, we don't, that's, Mr. Kennedy?
I'll answer you real quick, Mr. Minor. Because we, according to our own, I'm not talking about state statute, I'm talking about our own policy book, says that should the board, name shall not be considered permanent. Should the board subsequently initiate or be called upon to consider a name change of an existing previously named school, which is what this is, it is a previously named school as of a year ago, that in the event the board shall allow a period of time of not less than six months.
Okay.
So, I don't think we're saying the same thing. No, you're saying that we, the six months has already passed. I believe we adopted this name a year ago, and now we are taking action to rename it. Therefore, we are starting the clock on another six months. You may disagree with me, that's fine.
It doesn't say you have to-
Mr. Minor, please.
That's fine.
Can we have the attorney give an opinion on that?
We're getting there, Mr. Minor. We do have two attorneys in the room whose sole job is to be general counsel for the district and general counsel of the board. And they, I wanted, I did, I wanted everyone to have the opportunity to discuss this issue before I go there.
Okay, I have some more.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thanks.
For continuation.
I found it kind of funny, too, kind of ironic, that given some of the things that district is dealing with right now, that this is the issue that has, like, kept me up and caused me this consternation over the past 48 hours. And I kind of want to just talk to some of the comments that have been made and kind of my own thought process. When we did this a year ago, we each submitted a ballot and we went through our board process. It was a long one. We went through it. Criticisms have been made of that process, and that's okay. But on our ballots, the name Parish High School only appeared on two ballots. It was number one on Gina's, and it was the third choice on mine. It didn't appear anywhere else. The reason I had, and actually, my, on my ballot, I had Oak Hill as number one. I found out after the fact that probably not have, would have been, maybe not would have been the best choice for some of the reasons that have been discussed tonight and last week. My second choice was North River for this reason, was as Commissioner Trace mentioned, North River goes from Terraceea to Duette. And this school's attendance zone goes from Ellington to Duette. And that, to me, the term North River, while I admit it's an imperfect use, captured that geographic area that this, that this school is going to draw from. I do recognize that it sits in 34219, it sits in Parish, but it will draw kids from much farther outside of Parish. Last week, we heard about kind of Parish losing its identity and losing its history. I think that's a, that's a valid concern, but I think we need to be mindful of the identity and history of those who came before us, especially in this area. And when you look at U.S. history, you know, history books are written by the winners, as the old phrase goes, or something like that. But, you know, I think we need to be mindful of the indigenous population that was here for centuries before. And we need to be sensitive to that and those who came, and in my opinion, did a lot of the work to build this country, including African slaves and their descendants and immigrants. So, but I, but on the other hand, I have also come to understand the history of Parish a lot better over the past two weeks. And, and people whose opinion I respect, including some people in here tonight, have made the point that we are not naming necessarily this school for a single person, but we're naming it for a community that is known as Parish. And if the Tampa Tribune was correct in 1918, this community was named for a person who never owned slaves. So I'm, there's a, there's a pull. For me, there is, there is, there's a pull to both sides. Finally, when I walked in tonight, after agonizing over this for two days and going back and forth, and that's why I didn't really want to comment publicly because I didn't know which way I was going to go. And honestly, as I sit here now, I'm, this decision may wait six months now, but we'll see. But I had a call from Barbara Harvey, who's chair I now sit in. And I do represent District Two, which is, generally speaking, I represent the minority population, people of color in this county. And the point has been raised by my opponent in 2014, Rodney Jones, who I've come to have a lot of respect for. And then I know Rodney has met with the Parish Civic Association, and there has been some understanding there. And what I think is most unfortunate, too, is that we are living in an age of politics and civil discourse where, where instead of trying to find common ground, we tend to just throw gasoline on fires first. And, Mr. Chair, can I continue? Thank you. And so the reason I made the motion at the beginning to amend this, to call it North River Parish, was maybe a way to build that bridge to find a compromise that we can all be satisfied with. Or I guess when you make a compromise, everybody, everybody walks away unhappy, not happy. So, but I also, and I'll wrap up here really, as quick as I can. I do, it is, it is interesting, as a school board member, I did not know John Parish was a school board member until just a few minutes ago. And I also want to thank Mrs. Fowler, who has been advocating for a year on this issue. And she has done so consistently and with civility and with facts and has really done it the right way. And so that is a pull on me, too. We, as elected officials, we have to respond to any community that rises up in a united fashion to address us and to ask for a reconsideration or a consideration, whatever the case may be. So Mrs. Fowler, thank you for that. You've done an amazing job in advocacy. So, maybe, you know, I was sitting here last week and I was like, oh, my gosh, I'm about to make a decision that could potentially have some major repercussions. Thank you. I will, I'll wrap it. And here I sit again now, I'm like, well, this might have to wait. But, but it does concern me, the policy question concerns me. The, if we make the district, the superintendent's staff wait another six months to begin purchasing items for this new school, do we just open the school with no signage or kind of with its old name until we, until we go through this process again? So, but it does change the argument because all we're doing tonight is voting to rescind the motion to name it. So, anyway, because I've been agonizing over this so much, I just wanted to share my thought process was, because I've been very quiet about this over the past week. And, anyway.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
This has been a difficult and contentious issue. You know, what, what surprises me the most is these board policies, I believe, were passed in June of 2017 before I was even on the board. So it was the four members up here who passed these board policies. I made a commitment to the people of Parish that I would do everything that I could to find a pathway to address this. But it is surprising that we unanimously named this school more than a year ago. And while there may have been individual conversations with individual board members, it's interesting that this issue bubbled to the surface at a time that we were in an election for three board members. And that three of my opponents have spent time in Parish talking about they could change the name of the school. And yes, statutes allow us to change the name of a school. But some of you know I was the director of health policy for the entire state of Florida, and I'm a policy wonk, among other things. According to administrative courts, circuit courts, district courts of appeal, U.S. Congress, the Senate, the state of Florida, I'm an expert in policy. I understand that policy is in place for a reason. And in order to conduct orderly business of a public body, we need to follow policies. These are the policies that were passed before I was appointed to the board, before I became the chair. But I try my best to go through the pages and pages and pages of policy. And while some members believe this process was started, as my colleague, the vice chair, mentioned that it is the board. This policy says, however should the board, the board is a body corporate, should the board subsequently initiate? This is the first conversation that we've had going all the way through debate where this board is considering initiating a change of name. And the motion wasn't even made in that accord. And not just the attorney who spoke, but our own attorneys reviewed the policies because I asked them a number of weeks ago, as I was pursuing a pathway to accomplish this, what are our policies? What are state statutes? And any member up here could have gone into our board docs and reviewed the same policy. Now, we can have a difference of opinion. That's why there are attorneys, and that's why we have retained a general counsel for the board and a general counsel for the district. And, and I believe, I truly believe that this school district, through its policies, is responsible for, for, for actually almost a decimation of a sense of community in parts of Manatee County. Whether it's Palmetto, whether it's Parish, whether it's Maiaaca, our policies have moved this school district so far away from community-centric schools that we have situations like this. And I believe the schools should be the center of the community. I think the schools should serve as an identity of communities. I want our children to go to school in their community, all the way through high school. I want them to identify with a sense of community, and not just through a civics course, because of the way we develop communities, the way we pass policies with a priority and a focus in a community-centric way. But we have policies that we have to follow. And with that, given Vice Chair Messenger's statement of the intent of her motion to rescind, is indeed to change the name of the school, I will ask our general counsel, with regards to his review of our own policies, which came from and were authorized and, and signed off by Niola, the agency that we use for our policies, if indeed this applies to, to our policy, specifically, I think it was Section C, and as it relates to, I think there are four Florida statutes. Mr. Dieh?
Mr. Chair, thank you, board members. Policy that was provided to you early this evening is the one that controls this decision, 7320. I'll say right off the start that you do have the ability to change the name of the school. You have the ability to change the name of any school within the district. However, you do have to follow the policy that has been published. I'm not a big fan of the language Niola used. I think it's kind of Elizabethan. It's, it's not very clear and requires some gymnastics to get through it. The, the most important part says that if the board initiates or is called upon to consider a name change of an existing previously named school, then in that event, the board shall allow a period of time, not less than six months, from said date for community outreach, to paraphrase. I know there's discussion that, that six months started after the name was changed or the name was decided upon previously, when board members started getting emails and, and comments from members of the public, that it was, it might have been a bad choice. I read the rule to say that it needs to be, the six months needs to be more formal than that. The board, it says the board shall allow a period of time to initiate, or not to initiate, but to take, to hear from the community, community involvement, deliberation, discussion and debate. In other words, I think if you're starting that six-month period again, the entire community, the whole district, needs to know that this name is in play. And, and it needs to be more formal. That's why I think it takes more than a receipt of an email, a receipt of a phone call, or in Mr. Cologne's case, a threat, to start the six-month period. So, so my, my view, Mr. Chairman and board members, is that you do have the ability, but you need to make a decision that the clock has started running, and it needs to be an articulated, upfront and out loud starting gun, so to speak, that, that you are taking comments on whether you should change the name of North River High School. Having said that, Mr. Chair, let me, let me comment, if I could, on a couple of the other comments that you received this evening on this issue. Mr. Perone has filed a letter into the record, and I think he, he indicates that if it doesn't go in his client's preferred way, that there is pending legal action waiting ahead. Let me say this, and, and let me tie in also, Mr. John Neal used the word reliance several times during his comment. I don't know what was his intent using that word. It is a legal term, meaning that you, one other party has taken actions to fool another party, a second party into, into taking other actions, and then that second party has been hurt because of reliance on what the first party said. It's, it's a theory, legal theory called a stopple. I don't think that legal theory has legs in this situation. This is, this is administrative. Mr. Perone's letter indicated that there may be administrative action ahead if, if the, if the decision doesn't go his client's way. Basically, his theory being if you don't follow your rule, then, then they will file some kind of appropriate legal action under a Chapter 120 proceeding, which is administrative, not, not in the circuit court. Let me say this. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. You know, I don't know the other guy's theory until there's a complaint filed. But let's say maybe. Litigation over this question would take six months, if, at a minimum. If you want to revisit it, use the six months to open it up to discussion like the rule implies and, and go in that direction. So, so to sum up, Mr. Chairman, I think you can change the name. I think you do need a six-month comment period and then make your decision at the end of that period.
Mr. Talabon, do you concur?
I think the naming process, the naming process was well-defined, and it's by the majority of the board. I think we had two policies to consider. First is the motions to rescind. Yes, you may gladly do a motion to rescind by the majority of the board. However, in this particular instance, what is embedded in a policy entitled acquisition, removal, disposal, sale, or exchange of major tangible property, they embedded a renaming process. I'm not going to ask Neola why they decided to put it there. Needless to say, the answer is, based upon this, I would, I'd agree with Mr. Dye that you, you need a clock, and it needs to tick. And the question is, has that, has that clock already started ticking? That could be the issue. And I also agree with Mr. Dye, this is a DOE proceeding. This is a rules formation, and this will be a rules challenge.
Right.
Go ahead.
Mr. Dye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One other, one other thought. The, the, this is being brought up as a motion to rescind under, under Roberts, and one of the caveats under Roberts is that you can't rescind an action if it affects third parties. And I, I think there may be third parties that are affected by this, but I, I think the superintendent has looked into that. So the, the question is to whether third parties would be affected by the name change, I think is a, a fair one to the administration.
So, the superintendent indeed has, has reviewed that, and I'll call on her in, in a moment. But we need to consider where we are in this process. And, and I will tell you, I am not going to lower myself as some people accuse politicians of in making a decision about who's going to vote for me and not vote for me. You know, I make decisions up here based on what I think is right for the organization, for the institution, and my primary focus is the 50,000 children every day that we're charged with educating. And, and I, I will not lower myself to make a policy decision or decision on this board about whether somebody's going to vote for me or not. If you think that I can best serve the people and help contribute to the improvement of this district and the education of our children, then you're going to vote for me for that. And, and anybody who would, would, would send the emails and, and say they're not going to vote for me if I don't change the name of a school, that would be asking me to lower myself as low as you can go in politics and say, I'm going to do everything because someone's going to vote for me or not vote for me. And I will not do that. I will not chair the board in that orientation. So, we find ourselves in a, a position where I think it's firmly stated in policies that I believe were approved before I was on the board, where we have a minimum of a six-month period before we proceed with changing the name of the school. In December, the superintendent will name a principal for this school. I think this week or next week, the students who will be attending this school are choosing a mascot. So, we have gym floor that has to be ordered, we have stadium seats that have to be ordered, we have external and internal signage that has to be ordered. That will all have to be ordered, it will have to be manufactured, and it will have to be delivered with a name on that school during this six-month period of time. Understand, in December, a principal will be named, a principal will go about the charge of recruiting a faculty in an administration for this school. We cannot, nor should we, do anything that will impact the schedule of opening the school in Parrish in August of 2019. That is our responsibility. Yes, should we be responding to the public? We should. And should this been brought forward before? I mean, it was one of my first meetings that we took this up. I don't remember a whole lot of public comment. And it's over a year ago, over a year ago, when a board of this type that is responsible for overseeing $840 million a year, more than 7,000 employees. Members, we have a lot of problems that we are dealing with right now, and our time should not be spent discussing and debating an issue that cannot be resolved for at least six months. I'm more concerned about making sure our payroll goes out, which as of this morning, it hadn't been run. And this has consumed a tremendous amount of staff time, attorney's time. And you know what? Quite frankly, I'm disappointed that this was not brought forward within weeks or even a month of naming of the school. We have named two additional schools since then. And quite frankly, this did not rise to the level until after we named the elementary school. And had I known it, I would have changed my vote, I assure you, on naming the elementary school to avoid the amount of disruption and the squandering of staff resources and, 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 and the attempts of people to create division among this board and this community again. And quite frankly, you know, I'm tired of it. You know, people talk about unity. Yes, we should be. We should, we should be focused on the 50,000 children that we're charged with educating. You know, not playing politics and, 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 and working with other candidates and having sign factories in their office for opponents. So with that, I don't believe this motion is now in order, given what we have learned. Would the vice chair entertain a withdrawal of her motion, and then we can address how we start the clock?
I don't believe that needs to be withdrawn. It can be rescinded, and then we can start the clock. That was the impression I got.
But it has no effect.
It would have an effect that it might start our clock, and then we have six months, correct? Did I misunderstand you?
I, I don't, I, I don't believe it's proper.
I want to hear from Mr. Dye.
Hold on just a second. I don't, the question for Mr. Dye is, is it proper to rescind the motion naming the school, which means we have a school with no name, which means I don't know how we proceed, because we do have a school with a name. So you can't undo the name. The state of Florida has given this school a number, and it's registered with a name. Mr. Dye.
Mr. Chair, first of all, I, I'm not familiar with the DOE processes on how important a name, the name of the school is to their, their record-keeping. I do think as far as a motion, you can, you can rescind the vote, rescind the motion, and the school would there then be without a name, and then come back in six months and, and rename it, or give it a new name, including North River, if you decide that North River was the best choice all along. But, but I, I don't think, I, I think the motion is proper as far as rescinding the naming of the school. It's just that you are going to have to wait six months to, to rename it.
So, isn't creating a school with no name a change of a name? Yeah, I think it would still have the name North River for the next six months. The school was going to be built with the name North River, because in six months, the school's going to be pretty near completion, as far as the exterior. Mr. Talabon.
I don't, it's my opinion, I, I do agree with Mr. Dye, that we do start, if we do start the clock, and I also would agree with Mr. Kennedy, that we don't become a school with no name. I think the existing name is there, and it's to be contemplated, because the policy itself states specifically, let's get community input, allow not less than six months for involvement, deliberation, discussion. And I also agree that we have, the school itself ha, it's, it's assigned a number by, from the Department of Education. That number corresponds to a name as well, but the number is more controlling. So the answer is it would be North River High School until such a time that the board takes further action based upon community development, community involvement, if at all.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Dye.
Thank you. If you rescind the name, but call it the school that used to be called North River, I mean...
Formally known as.
Formally known, yes. I don't think it really matters, because in six months, if you start this process over again, if you start the six-month clock over again, you're, you're going to end up with a new name or, or the same name. I mean, you're going to, you're going to end up revisiting the decision, the decision in six months. So, I mean, you can use North River as a placeholder, but that's not going to affect the ability to come back and make a final decision in six months.
Mr. Talabon, for the district.
For the, for the district. Ms. Messenger, if you would make a motion right now, you would like to make a motion pursuant to 7320 policy for the renaming of an existing school. The existing school is North River High School, which is a new school. So to answer that question, it says new or existing, and Ms. Messenger, from your motion itself, you'll state, you would want to state that you'd like to have that school that's already been established as a new school renamed, and you'd like to start the process on a date certain, which would be today, for your six months or at some other previous time, if it was deemed already started. But quite frankly, I would say, I'd start my clock right now.
Vice Chair Messenger.
I'm not a lawyer. It does say, "or called upon to consider." If there at a previous time was someone that came and made public comment and called upon us to consider, would the clock have started then?
My interpretation would be that of Mr. Miners, and I would say to you, potentially, you could have started the clock, but the question is, how much notice have we had to the community that the clock was starting, from a start date to an end date? So that's why my first response when I spoke before this evening, I was, I didn't, I was not very definitive, because I can't tell you for a fact that inadvertently, without this policy being in effect, which is, which it was for last year, someone may have started the clock. The question is, did we know the clock was started? Did we know the clock started at that point in time? And I can, frankly, I can't tell you. But again, you would have to go back to your prior board meetings, minutes and agenda, to see if in fact that was the case.
But Mr. Dye, you feel that if we do a rescission as it's already there, then that would just automatically start the clock, and then there's no need to change this motion?
I, I think if the rescission, motion to rescind passes, you need to get, say, okay, that's our six-month starting gun, and start whatever processes you think are appropriate to reach out to the community. And, and I agree with Mr. Talabon, if the clocks, if the clock starts, people need to know that the clock has started. And, and if one board, one, one member of the public comes up to the podium and says, please rename the school, or somebody sends you an email, I don't think that's enough notice to the general public that, that this is a, this thing has legs, and you're really seriously considering revisiting the name.
And, Mr. Dye, I would ask you again, you made a comment with regards to provisions in Roberts Rules of Order with regards to when it is an appropriate motion to rescind, and I think you said that if there is a potential third-party impact, then it's not proper to rescind the motion.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. If, if third parties have been harmed by the motion to rescind, then Roberts says the motion to rescind is not appropriate. You, it's, rescission is best when it's in-house. It only affects the body itself.
Right. And, and given, given a myriad of things that I have seen, contracts that have been signed with a name, potential, you know, developer reliance, I think there is probably at least one third party which would be affected. Therefore, I think the ruling would be that the motion to rescind is out of order. And Vice Chair Messenger could make a motion to compel the board to initiate the process of renaming the North River High School, and then we would embark upon the appropriate public notices, public hearings, et cetera, and start the minimum, minimum six-month clock. Keep in mind, our rule says minimum six-month clock.
I would really love to hear from the superintendent about that, because I know at the last board meeting, she told me that she did not feel like this would cause any of these problems with the third parties.
It wouldn't if we were able to name it tonight. I was under the impression in the last one, due to some policy, and I, I realize that policies have changed, so it was quite confusing, but when researching, if it delays past today, there will be a financial cost to the delay of changing it. For we do have MSID, FISH, many things that are tied to it that do, does have to move forward. I did get a cost analysis. If we were to, whatever we called it today, if we put it on the school, there was no financial impact. But finding out that we have to wait six months, and the board can choose to do that, but there will be a financial cost. Even if we halt everything and don't order anything until that, there are some things that are still tied that we will have to change, with FISH and, and contracts and things of that nature. But I don't have an actual dollar amount in front of me. But they did tell me past tonight, there is a financial impact. I apologize.
Mr. Chair? I've been holding on for a lot of seconds.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy.
Uh, thank you. I, my question is for Superintendent Saunders. Would the, um, the financial impact, let me think this through. We haven't actually spent any funds on ordering equipment, ordering uniforms, and so forth. Could we, six months from now is March, and maybe staff is not here to answer this question, and I, maybe I know the answer, but I'm just curious. Could those purchases wait six months and still open the school in early August of 2019?
Some, some of those you can delay. Uniforms and such, you know, we, we can order them in the spring, that's not going to be a barrier. But there are certain things tied to the construction, the FISH, the outlining, the school's identifications and so forth, from a capital construction part, that can't be halted. Can you go back and redo and, and make all those necessary changes? Yes, you can, but there, there will be a financial cost. So you can change it. You can halt building a sign until six months later. That, that can, that can come later. But there will be some things that have to roll now, that we will have to go back and change, that are more on the capital side, that, you know, isn't for the consumer to see. Some of those things, we, you know, like I said, uniforms, sign out front, and so forth, that, that's not a barrier.
Okay. Just follow up real quick.
Okay, let me, let me reiterate what she's saying, because there's a component to it, you know, having had a construction company. There are certain things that have to be posted, signs, before you get a certificate of occupancy. So, given, given the timeline for a lot of these things to be manufactured, we would be taking a risk of not being able to get the signage required for a certificate of occupancy up in this campus that spreads out over 90 acres. I mean, I, I think people, I, I think there's a, a, a minimization taking place of the magnitude of constructing a campus of this size and scope. And so what I ask is that we keep focused on the fact that we need this school to have a CO, so we can start moving people into it well in advance of the August opening. I mean, you're, I, I've opened a new school, not this large, but I've opened a new school in Brandon as a department chair, and I was intimately involved. And there is a lot of work that goes into opening a school of this size and scope. So I, I think, you know, the, go ahead for the follow-up.
Thank you. So the school is slated open, depending on the calendar, the second week of August of 2019. Six for students, six months from today would be February 20, 21st, 2019 roughly. So that would still be six more months, five and a half months. I, I, and I know we're, I know this is, puts a strain on staff, and, but I guess what I'm getting at is if the cost to the district is refiling paperwork with the state or with the federal government, that doesn't seem as big a burden as painting the gym, or painting the gym floor, or buying band uniforms, or sports uniforms, and the signage out front. And would we need a certificate of occupancy by mid-February of 2019? Because to me, it seems like the school would still be under construction.
We, we probably need a CO, I would think, no later than, than probably the first of July.
So we would, that fits the timeframe, then. Because I'm saying it would be...
I mean, we're not going to snap our fingers, and the place is going to be ready for the students.
That's exactly my point, though, because our six months would be up in February.
Well, here's, here's my suggestion, that, that there are a lot of questions, and the superintendent started getting answers to these questions. You know, my suggestion, if, if the board wants to pursue the process to rename the school, the school's name is going to be North River until it's changed. I mean, it's, it's going to be North River until it's changed. And we have policies that say it's a minimum, a minimum of six months. You know, I'm, I don't think it's wise, but we... You know, I'm, I don't think it's wise, but we can get the reports from construction. They, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if the board chooses, I can bring back at the next meeting, since we have to, you know, start the process anyway, specific details and cost analysis, and then the board will have specific information to make a decision on it. But you can go ahead and follow the process of the clock starting now, so that, that's still part of the consideration.
So Mrs. Messenger, would you like to make a motion for the board to initiate the process to change the name of North River High School?
Should I come back tomorrow, Mr. Hope, do you think I could talk by then?
Well, as soon as we have a motion for you to speak to, because based on the general counsel, the motion to rescind is not a proper motion because there's a third party.
Well, you've spoken five times since I've been in the last twenty minutes trying to talk.
My intent is to give you the last word, Mr. Minor.
Well, I'm not asking for the last word, I'm asking for a word right now. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Minor, you have the floor for whatever you want to talk about.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Kennedy, would, would you second or make a motion that the name of this new school six months from now, you know, would be the Palmetto North River School, High School? Excuse me, what did I say?
The Palmetto, we can, we can.
I'm sorry. Is, is there no bounds to your rudeness, Mr. Chair? Excuse me, you know, the parish, North River High School. I'm dressing this to Mr. Kennedy, thank you very much.
Mr. Minor, can I respond?
Sure, that's what I'm asking for.
Mr. Kennedy for a response.
Um, Mr. Minor, I, I appreciate the idea, and I appreciate the thought, but I, I think if we're going to do this, we need to start back from square one. And as I mentioned in kind of my bridge-building comment, I think this would be a good opportunity to bring everybody together who has been involved on both sides or every side of this debate, and use it as an opportunity to bring us together, as obviously we've seen the divisions over the past, especially the past week and the past two weeks. So I, I would, my, my feeling is, if we're going to do this, we just rescind, and we start the clock, and we start this process over. And again, I know this is a pain in the neck, and I apologize to the superintendent and staff, because I know this board is creating a bunch of headaches for you, but, but for all the reasons that have mentioned, been mentioned earlier, and Mr. Chair, politics has nothing to do with this, I know three of us are up for election, and I know I've gone back and forth on this multiple times in the past two weeks, but this school is going to be around for a hundred years, and we are going to be around for maybe the next couple of weeks. So it doesn't, or excuse me, for the next couple of months, because we, we still have till November, no matter what happens. So I, I want to err on the side of doing this right for, for this process, and again, my apologies to the, to those who see us as flim-flammers or flip-floppers, and, but here's a chance to respond to the community, let's start the clock again. It looks like we can do it with minimal cost to the district, and, and let's just go from there.
So.
Okay, I took, I took twenty seconds to speak. May I have another minute and a half, Mr. Chair? Thank you.
You did give the floor over to Mr. Kennedy.
I asked for, no, I didn't give him the floor, I asked for a response.
For a moment. Mr. Kennedy, would you like to make a motion to initiate the process of renaming the North River High School? The motion to rescind is not an appropriate motion, given the third party.
Who is the third, who's the third party outside of the district?
There were a number of them, we heard from a few. Mr. Dye made the reference that the motion to rescind is not an appropriate motion if there's third-party impact.
But I don't think we've established the third-party impact.
I don't know that it's the board's determination. We had two attorneys that, Mr. Titlebaum for a comment.
Mr. Kennedy, it's my strongest recommendation that we initiate this, the process, to abandon the motion to rescind. It does get its name regardless, and to go ahead and follow the policy of renaming, this would prevent any type of legal challenge later on that would anticipate, if we make a motion to rescind, and if it's not a hundred percent proper, or if it's challenged, it could, we could wind up in litigation over this, technically through DOA. So my recommendation is, follow the policy manual under seventy-three twenty, and we will do the renaming of it through the procedure, as recommended to Ms. Messenger as well, should you guys want to go that route.
Okay, thanks, Mitch.
That's my, my legal advice.
I agree, thank you. Shouldn't we deal with the motion? Even if we take Mr. Titlebaum's advice, we should deal with this motion to rescind.
I, I already ruled the motion to rescind an improper, out-of-order motion, that it's no longer an issue.
Does anybody want to appeal that ruling?
Yeah, I second the appeal.
Did you appeal it?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to appeal the ruling.
Okay.
I second.
Although I mean, I, I think Mr. Titlebaum.
We just heard from two attorneys. Now we're going to go to the board's attorney to repeat his comments. So let's everybody listen to Mr. Dye and Mr. Titlebaum. Mr. Dye?
Mr. Chair, I need to, a mic.
A mic.
Thank you. I moved it. I need to review the procedures on appeal of the chair's ruling. I believe that once a board member moves the appeal and another board member seconds it, it becomes the motion before the, the body. One of the things I'm unclear about is whether there is debate on the motion.
Yeah, and I don't think there is, but let's, let's recess for you to review it.
Mr. Before, before recess, I, I have a thought. Let's just, let's just clean this up. Mr. Minor, can you, can you withdraw your, your second appeal?
No.
I'd like to withdraw the motion. Okay, then let's, let's just vote on it right now. We, we have my motion to appeal, let's just vote on it so we can, it can fail and we can move on.
Well, I think this, that's fine.
Call the question.
All right. Let's, let's call the question. Those in favor of appealing the chair's ruling, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Nay.
Mr. Chair, I need.
Okay, the, 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 the chair's ruling stands, so the motion to rescind is not on the table.
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to initiate the renaming process of North River High School.
In accordance with rule?
In accordance with School Board Policy seventy-three twenty, effective immediately.
I'll second that.
Okay, having been moved and seconded, is there debate on Mr. Kennedy's motion to initiate the process to consider changing the name of North River High School in accordance with the school board's policies?
We've already had it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No? Let's see, who's the mover? Uh, the mover was Mr. Kennedy, would you like to?
Michelle, can you put me in? I'm not even open on boardroom.
I haven't heard what Mr. Minor voted.
You can vote for me, too. Me as well, I'm sorry.
Okay, so now we're in a posture, uh, all right, so if everyone would just record their votes.
I'm not online.
Yeah, his isn't either. You're just going to have to voice-put.
Okay, so Mr. Minor, what was your vote?
I haven't voted yet, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Cologne voted no, if you show that, and Mr. Minor, we're, we will await your vote. You are the, you are the decision-maker.
Well, I'm, I'm reviewing what you all are considering, you know, the authority, you know, the language that Mr. Dye spoke about. Should the, the board subsequently initiate? And I guess the idea of this motion is to initiate tonight. And this is Mr. Kennedy's motion, and so I'm in discussion, and I, is that your intent, Mr. Kennedy?
My intent is to start the clock tonight.
Okay, the word is initiate.
Correct, right.
And it's to initiate the name change, is that correct?
It is.
Of a previously named school, correct?
Correct. As named on August eighth, twenty-seventeen.
Do we need to recess while you go over it?
No, 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 let him speak, let him speak.
In that event, the board shall allow a period of time, if not less than six months, which I guess we're, that would bring it to somewhere around February, you know, twenty-first or something like that. Is, is that your intent, Mr. Kennedy?
It is, sir, yes.
A, a minimum of six months.
But it can be six months, I think with six months, we can.
Not less than six.
According to your own admissions, you may not be here.
That's, well, whomever is here can get it done in six months.
Prior to taking action for a change of name, and that, that's, that's your motion, that's your intent?
That is both, yes.
Okay, and I guess, as part of a discussion, the point is that if we do this, we do not have the complications that might arise from someone being prejudiced by a rescission. Is that the idea?
Yeah, the rescission's gone.
Okay, we're just changing.
Well, we're making a new, I'm making a new motion, new motion to rename a school that already has a name.
To make a name change. And so for at least six months, there would continue to be a school named North River High School. Is that your understanding and intent?
Correct. Yes, yes and yes.
Okay. And for purposes of discussion, maybe clarification just for this old line, I'm asking, you know, the superintendent, we're not going to be fielding a football team or anything until a year from now. I understood earlier that this action may prejudice purchase of some things, because of what appears to be a sense of the board to, to make a change in, in six months. And I'm wondering how significant that is. We don't have to put a sign up tomorrow. I guess that could wait six months.
Mr. Minor, what I'll do for the next board meeting is I will compile the things that we must move forward on, and things that we can delay that aren't needed and hold off. And if we're moving forward and a name changes, and we have to go make a change, and it has a financial impact, I will let you know. But we will continue moving forward, even if we have to make adjustments. But some things we can hold off on. But I will have details for you in the next meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair, for that discussion, and that, I will vote yes.
Okay, show Mr. Minor voting yes. So on this night, we have initiated the clock, and staff will begin the, the process of working towards the six-month date. Does anyone need a brief recess? We've been at this for a few hours. We'll stand an informal recess.
Thanks, I'd like to go to the men's room.
You made it.
We did. We did.
Go out to prep.
Okay, the, the board will reconvene and once I get everyone in here, I'm going to adjourn the board meeting. Okay, at this time, I will adjourn the meeting of the board. And I now will, so I'm closing the regular meeting and now we are opening the public hearing for the board to hear comments regarding the proposed changes to the student progression plan for the 2018-2019 school year and answer any questions related thereto. Madam Chair, would you preside over the public comments?
Okay, I have two folks signed up and then I'll open it up to anyone else since it's a public hearing. First is Mr. Gibbelina. I don't see him, though. And then next is Mrs. Mendel.
And then I have someone that came who didn't sign up, but since it's a public.
Yes.
Okay, does anyone know what the manatee schools mandate is?
Is this on?
Hello? Oh. Does anyone know what the manatee schools mandate is? It's a policy that apparently you all wrote that says that if you have lesson of three on the FSA that you can't take an honors or advanced class at Hale Middle School. Did you know that you cannot use a waiver to refuse intensive reading or math at Hale Middle School? Did you know that at Lakewood Ranch High School, you can't use the waiver to get out of intensive reading but only one time in the four years that you're there? And that is in the student progression plan, in case you didn't know. Did you know that if you have lesson of three on the FSA, that you cannot take Algebra I? And you can only take Algebra I-A and I-B? And the next year, you can't, and you can't take the EOC until 10th grade? Do you remember voting on that in the student progression plan last fall? Because I don't think you did. These administrators here at some schools lie with a straight face when asked about the plan and they lie again, this time about a manatee schools mandate, a fake policy. Did you write and vote in this policy doc while you were in a shade meeting? Did you all just forget to post it or, or have a public hearing on it? We need to know because your school administrators are clearly more informed as to what you all are up to than you all are. What I did notice is that you appear to allow Ms. Saunders to get her minions to go after kids on the bubble. Yes, I know what kids on the bubble mean and now all the members of the opt-out movement know this as well. Those are the kids that you like to target the hardest because with just a little bit of effort, you can push those kids just a few points away from passing with a little boost. I asked how far off a lot of the families that contacted me because they were denied the ability to take advanced classes. Their curriculum was dumbed down and their, their coursework was dumbed down as well. I asked them how far they were from failing the FSA and they said only a point or two. So sure enough, they were the kids on the bubble. The kids had report cards of As and Bs and they were already in advan- in advanced classes in the more rigorous courses and in their eighth grade and their fifth grade, teachers had recommended that they do so when they move on to their next school, but their principals at the new school said, "No." Said, "No, sorry, kid, 180 days doesn't count for anything. It's meaningless because we don't trust your teachers to know what you're capable of. We only trust the almighty FSA score, the only thing we're measured on, kid. So that's how we're going to measure you whether you like it or not. That plan is meaningless to us. We don't even know what's in it. Parents don't know where to find it or what it even is. The joke's on you, kid, and your parents. We make up our own rules here, kid, and even make up fake documents and policies that we pull out of the air to suit us, not you, kid. If you want your data, you better rewrite a better plan because you're sending all of these people to me. This one, this plan is too simple for the simple folks at Lakewood Ranch and Hale to understand. Yes, I call them simple because I cannot in good conscience call them educators. I cannot call anyone who will bold-faced lie to parents and hold children from rigorous classes for a pathetic test score. And I have much more to say. I'll put it in an email, but this has got to stop. It needs to be rewritten because these people cannot understand it and they lie ruthlessly."
Thank you. Mr. Gibbelina, I saw you walk back in.
For the record, Glenn Gibbelina, taxpayer, community activist. I requested five minutes. I'm speaking under my nonprofit corporation, Why Dads Matter. You have a copy of it. I believe they emailed it to you. And I didn't even want to be here tonight. I give blood every fifty-six days, all negative because that's my community part of what I feel I have to do. Want to read on this here, "Participation in School District and State Assessments." All students, I take that back, reporting to parents. The district must report annually in writing to the student and his or her parent or legal guardian and the student's result on each statewide assessment test. The progress of students toward achieving state and district requirements for proficiency, reading, writing, social studies, mathematics, science shall be, shall be reported, shall be reported to his or her parents. The district must report annually in writing to the student and their parent. Why Dads Matter, we are a parent organization. So, you know, you talked about the Constitution and they threw it off the, the agenda number eight. I never heard of that going on for the CRC, the Constitutional Revision Committee. That conversation never came up, but I'll tell you what did come up, the constitutional amendment to be a parent. I've been to five of these, five of these around the state. Fort Myers, Tampa, St. Pete, Jacksonville. I've talked to the CRC. All occasions. St. Pete, I waited thirteen hours to talk two minutes. These are our rights. These are our God-given rights to be a parent, to be involved in our children while they're under the umbrella of this school district. I'm going to enter this into the record. Ten years. Ten years, this school district has violated my constitutional right to be a parent. Ten years. And I don't say this, I, I say this for other parents. I don't say it for myself. My, my child's already aged out. But I will tell you, when my daughter was in Kanan, one day I go to pick her up, she's gone. The school district, because I'm not on the list and as a non-custodial parent, you couldn't tell me what next school she went to. It took me six weeks before I found her at Orange Ridge, which was more like a ju- juvenile detention center than a school. Then she was removed from there, another five weeks. Oh, by the way, no report card from Orange Ridge, ever. Couldn't get a meeting with the teachers. Able. Never got a report card, transferred to Seabreeze. Jackie West, one of the best principals you ever had. She threw everything aside. You know what? Have lunch with your daughter. I don't care what, what the, what your ex says. You come here and do it. I had to, I had to do records request for my daughter's report card. Then she went to Bay Shore. I was having lunch with her and then they got a letter from an attorney. We don't think it's in the best interest for that dad to have lunch with his daughter. Guess what? Your principal there, who you promoted, said, "We don't want you on campus anymore." And that was the end of that. I had to do a records request to get a report card. I talked to Mr. Dai, who by the way, has four children. You'd think he'd be an advocate for dads. That was hardly the case, Mr. Dai. You took a constitutional oath, uphold my rights as a parent. You failed miserably since you've been here.
Mr. Gibbelina, the policy says we're not going to talk.
I'm not going. Well, I'm just telling you, when you, when you violate my constitutional right, it's contempt. There's consequences for that. I just hope that this board recognizes you cannot continue on in this direction treating parents as second-class citizens. So I'm going to do a shout-out there to any parent that feels that they've been overlooked by this district, that the parental rights have been violated by this board. Feel free to email me at whydadsmatter@yahoo.com because enough is enough. I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm instructing this elected board to put my constitutional revision, and by the way, you can write, you can look at it, it's in Tallahassee. It's an official amendment. Never got a breath of air at all the meetings I went to. I strongly suggest you put it into your policy. Because as this stands right now, it could be written on toilet paper.
Thank you. I'm not wearing a suit, though. Okay. That, I was going to say, that, that's all the people that had signed up, but now we're going to open it up to anyone else that would like to come forward and speak. You have three minutes. I ask that you make sure that you state your name clearly and spell it for the record.
My name's Jack Heupel. H-E-U-P-E-L. Okay. I don't have any prepared remarks here for tonight, so I just wanted to basically learn a little bit more about the SPP. Since I know we spoke earlier here today. I appreciate the opportunity to, to come up here and talk with you folks. Wanted to learn a little bit more of it in terms of the way I see it. Parents should be advocates for their kids, not the schools. Parents know their kids more than the schools do. And I'm just not seeing that taking place right now. I lived in Lakewood Ranch. I've lived in Lakewood Ranch for twenty years, built my home there. And a couple of disturbing things took place here at Lakewood Ranch High School. I spoke with you last week, Mr. Hopes, about it. In terms of meeting with guidance counselors, assistant principals, SPP plan. The waiver was rejected the first time. I didn't even know a waiver existed to get somebody out of intensive math. It was rejected the first time. Told me, could not be accepted. Finally, they did accept that, but can't get out of Algebra I-A. I'll, I'll give you an idea of what took place in Algebra I-A. May I approach her?
This, this is what, this is what they did. That's, that's third grade.
I, I'm not kidding. I, I'm not. That's what she brought home. They did that yesterday. Seriously.
And what grade?
Freshman, high school.
What?
Lakewood Ranch High School, yes. That's Algebra I-A. Seriously, that's third grade. Is it not? Even when I talked with Willie Clark out there about that, I could see, I could tell by the look on his face.
What, what the heck is this?
Okay, so there's a problem there. Not to mention the fact, there's disruptions going on in the classroom, too. Not to mention the fact, there's disruptions going on in the classroom, too. Kids are just, they just don't want to be there. The kids that are in there, they're not the academic peers of my child. They're just not. And so they're being sent down to discipline. It's just, it's crazy. It's not, it's not a good learning environment for my child. And yet, I've been through everybody, and I can't, I can't get a change. So what are my rights? I'm trying to fight for my child, and nobody will do anything for me. It's unconscionable, it's hard to comprehend, it really is. I mean, please, I mean, you're, what you just reacted to just self, it just says everything. Is that what my daughter should be in? No way, no way. So again, like I talked with you today, I ask that you take into consideration everything, the 180 calendar days, her grades. It's all FSA-based, it's one test. You gotta be kidding me. Over how many years of a, of a school report card and resume? It's crazy. So I'd love to hear some feedback here on what you guys think about that. Can I have that back, by the way?
Yeah, it's right here.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment?
You go ahead.
On this topic? Okay, that concludes public comment.
All right, we will close the public hearing, and we will now reconvene the regular meeting of the board. We're getting ready to. All right, Superintendent Saunders for item number two on our agenda, the approval of the adoption of amendments to the student progression policy.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the adoption of the amendments to the student progression plan, policy for elementary school, middle school, high school, and K-12 virtual education.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. They have been moved by Mr. Cologne and seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Is there any debate, members?
I, I do have some questions and comments of Mr. Lasada.
Mr. Kennedy?
I've got, I've got some notes to go over with Mr. Lasada if possible.
Okay, Mr. Lasada, would you come on down? For the record, will you state your?
No, I'm kidding. Okay, thanks. Mr. Lasada, I have some notes that are based on the document that Mrs. Mendel sent with her, with her changes. Of course, that document is now on my work laptop that just died. So do you happen to have a paper copy of that? Because that's what I'm going to reference.
I knew that your computer was going to die, so I wanted to make sure that I had that copy for you.
That's it, thank you, awesome.
Now, this is my copy, too, so you may have to send back my.
No, I just, just so I can reference page numbers?
Sure.
Because that's the one thing that's not on my notes.
This ends with her comments in there.
Okay.
And then these are with our comments, too.
Oh, that I have, this is, this is what I put my notes on, okay, great, thanks, Tony. Okay. I'm going to start on M. 8.
M. 8, okay.
Board of Colleagues, I'm sorry, bear with me.
The intervention plan?
Do you have a page number, Tony? Oh, I got it, page 16.
They're numbered, they're in number order.
Yep, okay. Your response was, "The intervention plan is communicated from the district of the schools. Parents can request to see the plan by contacting the school." The only note I have here is add "parents" to the sentence, if that's... Sorry, I'm just going through my notes, I haven't had a chance to put this back in context yet. "For example, diagnostic results must be readily accessible to teachers, school administrators, certified school counselors, and school psychologists." My suggestion is just to add "parents" to that sentence, pretty simple change. I am going to skip to M. 10, which is the next pa, or two pages, page 18. "Replace with 'may' was Mrs. Mendel's suggestion in my notes. I agree with her, and I'll, I'll take it down to the new language. Students receiving supplemental interventions at the end of the school year may begin receiving interventions at the beginning of the next school year until there is evidence that the student has closed the gap and no longer needs supplemental or intensive support services." Now that one, I'm sure you probably have some, some, yeah, a comment on as well. I was agreeing with Mrs. Mendel that we create, change that "should" to a "may", but I was curious to hear what you, what you thought.
So with the appropriate services, when master schedule, which you know takes place much earlier in the year, we want to make sure that students, if they are receiving interventions at that time, that they continue those interventions until we see something come through that shows that they are meeting the grade level requirements.
Okay, I guess this is...
So if they do meet that requirement, then we would remove the interventions from that because if they're on grade level, we're going to continue to move them through grade level.
Okay.
Is that what you're referencing?
It is, it is. And let me just back up, is that, the intervention, this is moderate, intervention plan must be developed by the end of the first quarter or within six weeks, and that's old language. So students receiving supplemental interventions at the end?
Are you referring to notifying parents?
No, this is just more about a, kind of the should, the shall versus may issue that we had, you know, it seems to come up from time to time. Okay, Bridget, I'm reading your note here. "Replace with 'may', students should not be denied the ability to register for an elective if they have met grade level and standards requirements by the end of the school year." Yeah, this is kind, I mean, this is, this is a very minor tweak, I think, this, this suggestion of "may". So I guess my better question would be, how does the, at the end of the school year, how, how does the student demonstrate that they don't need the services anymore?
Our first data point would be the FSA.
Okay.
Because by statute, 1,082, we have to make, you know, students have to take the FSA by statute.
Or at least attempt.
We, we, correct.
Yeah, yeah, participate, right.
At a district, we have to administer the, the FSA.
Okay.
So that's our first data point.
Now, the, the state does require interventions. Now, the manner in which they're delivered can be up for, for discussion and so forth with the principal, but we are required to have an intervention plan for those that are not meeting grade level expectation. That, so I do think that's why the "should", so maybe you need to send, you know, a, a copy of that statutory requirement. And we do have to submit, yeah. Now, we do have a waiver where parents can opt out of things, but we are required to ensure that interventions are being given and provided to students. Parents can definitely opt out of those.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. All right, Tony, page 19, and this is the recess, this is the recess item. And my only, my only suggestion here was made, was kind of a, maybe a fix.
Can you repeat the number again?
Oh, sure, sorry, M. 11, or note 11. And Mrs. Mendel's note is, "Why is 30 minutes of free play recess required on the day that PE is required? Should it be on the days the PE is not?" And then when I was looking at this, it, it looked like the statute just says they should have 20 minutes per day regardless of PE or not. Is that your understanding, too?
If I'm not mistaken, that statute, because we read it over and over and over again, that language that's in there is directly from the statute.
Okay.
So if you want me to revisit that, I can. If you want me to send you a copy of the statute, I can.
Yeah, I, I.
But I, I can tell you, they have recess and PE every day, so... They might have copied the statutory language, but all of our elementary schools have PE and recess daily in the elementary schedule.
Okay. I believe that is, that came down from the DOE.
Right.
Because I remember I was on the DOE when they did it.
That's correct.
Okay, so, Tony, let me just go back. In addition, I'm in, I'm in paragraph B here, the highlighted part, or just before the highlighted part. "In addition, schools will provide 20 consecutive minutes..." It's blacked out by the draft. "20 consecutive minutes of free play recess per day."
In addition.
In addition, you have 30 minutes of PE.
And... Oh, okay, okay. A minimum of 30 consecutive minutes is required on any day that, of, of that PE instruction. So let me, let me back up and read the sentence again, which I think would be a good fix to make it clear. "In addition, schools will provide 20 consecutive minutes of free play recess per day." In addition, I mean, it has an "a" there in the, in the note, "to a minimum of 30 consecutive minutes is required on any di..." Back up, "minimum of 30 consecutive minutes of PE is required." So just kind of take, lop off the end of that sentence. Because I, because it's just, it's just a little clunky to me, and it may be, believe me, I'm sure a lot of stuff that comes out of legislature that you copied from statute is clunky, but it just, the sentence didn't quite make sense to me, it just seemed a little...
Can you send us the notes, too? I mean, if it's voted on, will you send us the notes?
I sure can, yeah, and this is...
If it's with the changes based on your changes, then I would want to make sure I put it there correctly.
Yeah, and it's, it doesn't change anything about the intent, it just changes the sentence, the structure of the sentence.
Absolutely.
Okay. Sorry, I covered my notes. M. 15, and "I ready" has come up a couple times tonight. Page 25, very top, summer school promotion.
So can, can I, I hate to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
"I ready" is not used for summer school. We only use SAT 10 in the portfolio.
Okay.
So that might answer your question. Because they're, they're using "I ready" in her comment, and we don't use that in summer school.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Third-grade students who scored the 45th percentile on the SAT 10 at the end of the summer. Okay. And nor is that a change that we want to, we don't want to, we don't want to base a summer school promotion.
Our diagnostics are during the year, they're not during the summer school.
Mr. Kennedy, for those of us trying to follow you, would you let us know the, the paragraph number or page or something like that?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. That one, I'm, I'm ready to move on past that one, but it was page 25, very first paragraph.
I thought this was a one-on-one.
Sorry if I didn't say that before. Okay, I've got this note throughout, but I'll say it for the first time on, on note 18, and that is page, and I appreciate everybody's patience. But I wanted to address the notes that I thought...
Are you referring to M. 18?
Comment 18, this is, Board of Colleagues, this is page 34, and it's under "Course Acceleration and Enrichment", and I'll just read it out. And this is new language. "Principals may override district criteria and place high school students in high school dual enrollment courses. Based on data that the student is capable of success in these courses, this data must be documented." This to me, now, Mrs. Mendel, I bring this up because this was something that you flagged. This to me is okay because it falls under the category of the principal discretion that we put in a couple of years ago.
But it's, it's also based on parent, teacher, and guidance counselor recommendation. Those were all renewed, they then are...
Wait a second, we're, we're beyond the public hearing, and this, this is not the way to conduct this, Mr. Dai.
Mr. Chair, we need to get comments on, on the record. And, and speaking from the back of the room, it's not going to get it on the, on the record.
So let's, let's try to bring some order to this. So if, if we can coordinate, if, if Mr. Kennedy, you need an audience member to participate, then we're going to need to call him up to the podium.
Okay.
So that...
I can...
You want me to address that?
For dual enrollment, the, the requirements are set by the state college or university that we partner with.
The principal can't override it.
So they have to meet their criteria. We don't set the criteria for dual enrollment.
Okay.
That, so we, we are, we have to hear to the contract we have with the college.
Okay, but that was, and that's, that's a good point. But like I said, the reason I, this principal discretion note reoccurs a few times in here. That was just the first time it popped up.
Sure. That's why that one can't, because they, we, a parent can't override the requirement for the articulation agreement with the university or college.
Which we have approved each year.
Okay. Everybody, page 35?
Can you reference the comment?
Comment is number 20. Kind of the same thing. "Principals may override the district criteria and place students in dual enrollment courses."
Because you, because you have the marked comments and we, and we don't, I really need the paragraph or the paragraph number or...
Page 35, third paragraph, it's labeled "E" as in Edward, and the very last sentence.
No, I believe that's referencing dual enrollment, but it's also referencing high school courses at the middle school, is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Because that one, principal can't override.
Yeah, high school and middle school.
That is correct.
High school courses in middle school.
And that is based on performance data.
Same thing, okay. That's the last one, okay. Okay, M. 25? Okay, this is page 36. This is under the eighth grade geometry honors.
Can you reference the comment?
Sure. The, Mrs. Mendel's comment is, "Students will be able to retake the Algebra 1 EOC during the summer testing dates and again in the fall. If the student passes, placement in eighth grade geometry honors. The Algebra 1 EOC assessment is currently administered four times each year in the fall, winter, spring, summer, per the state of Florida." And what's highlighted here is the end of this paragraph under, again, under eighth grade geometry honors at the top, where the student, "but does not pass the algebra end of course assessment or earn the, or earn the comparative concordant score, may not enroll in geometry honors."
So I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm just trying to reference from my memory, is that for seventh graders who have taken the Algebra 1 and now are trying to, and that's for enrollment in Geometry Honors for eighth grade?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, do you know our pass rate for seventh grade Algebra 1 honors?
According to your notes, it's very low.
Well, our pass rate is very high, and it's, since I've been a principal and at the district level, it's been 100%.
Oh, really? Okay, okay.
We do not put students from sixth grade to seventh grade unless those students...
My bad, Tony.
I mean, we're talking a high school course at seventh grade.
Okay, those who do not pass.
Correct.
Is very low, sorry about that, I misspoke. Okay. M. 26, same page. Okay, and this, this is one I, I would ask the board, my board colleagues, to pay attention to. Because this is, this is a decision of, that we might want to think about. But this is the next paragraph under "World Languages", and it says, "The student must have earned a Level 4 or 5 on the most current required state assessment in reading, or a Level 4 or 5 on the most current required state assessment in math, and have all of the following." Now, this is kind of the "and slash or".
I'm sorry, could you reference the comment?
Sure, of course. Change "and" to "or", and, or...
I mean, the, the comment number.
Oh, M. 26, I'm sorry, Tony.
Thank you.
M. 26, I'm sorry.
And we're on "E", World Language 1, or?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And it does say "or"?
This same comment is true for both. No, the, the reference here that I'd like for us to just take a look at per Mrs. Mendel's request, is to change the "and", let me read it again from the top, "World Languages 1. The student must have earned a Level 4 or 5 on the most current required state assessment in reading, or a Level 4 or 5 on the most current required state assessments in math, and have all of the following." So her suggestion is to make that "and" an "and slash or", so you could get through, you could be moved into this course even if you don't have a Level 4 or 5, if you have a teacher, counselor, and/or administrator recommendation, and a 3.0 grade average in the previous year's Advanced Language Arts course.
And for what grade are we referring to?
This is...
High school.
High school. We're in the high school now. This is still no.
Vice Chair Messenger.
He said he, he wanted board input on that. I agree with that. I think it should say "or" or "and/or". I have a whole list of "and/or"s that I think need to be changed to "or"s.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few, too.
Purely, I'm sure you do, purely for the fact that, you know, I'm not going to rely on one test.
Well, and I just want to make a suggestion to you, to, to the board that there's a couple ways to do this, either make this an "and/or", which would mean a student could be enrolled in this advanced course with just a teacher, counselor, and/or administrator, administrator recommendation, and then a 3.0 grade point average in the previous year. Now, obviously, that lowers the entry point or the entry requirements into that course, which is probably fine because I think a lot of us feel the same way about FSA testing. which is probably fine, because I think a lot of us feel the same way about FSA testing. But on the same, same side, we don't want to, we want to keep courses open to let kids try, but at the same time, we don't want to put a kid into a course where they're not prepared for. So maybe we could change it to, student must have earned a level three, four, or five. That would kind of broaden the, the number of kids that could, if they wanted to take on that challenge.
Ms. Messenger for a comment?
I have a question. So also then changing that and to an or, adding the three, four, or five, and then also changing that to an or?
That's a possibility.
And I misspoke, this is a high school course in middle school. I just wanted to clarify that.
That's what I, that's, that's the point I wanted to make. I think, I think we're, we're talking about a middle school student taking a very advanced course.
But I do think at level three, I mean, they're proficient, so that would, just like we allow them in algebra or geometry and that, so.
Level three, possibly would suffice.
So I mean, the low, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Sorry. The, if, I mean, the point is well taken about the FSA. You know, there are, there are students out there who, for whatever reason, might not be good test takers, or they had a bad day that spring, and now it's going to hamper them for their entire next academic year. So if we really want to keep it wide open for the possibilities for students regardless of their test scores, I, I would say Gina's suggestion, take my suggestion and add Gina's, which is add level three to the first line of that paragraph, and then make an and or where it goes down to the bullet points, teacher counselor and or.
So you still want to leave level four and five on the required state assessment in mathematics, or?
Or we could say a student has earned a minimum of a three on the state assessment and/or has a teacher counselor and/or administrator recommendation, and a 3.0 grade point average in the previous year's advanced language arts.
So you want to add level three to both those, those lines, for reading and/or mathematics?
Well, it's, it's, it's under E.
Mr. Kennedy, can I interrupt for a minute?
Yeah, of course.
We're referencing high, middle school students who are taking high school courses.
Right.
And our high school courses, and with the world language, I believe those are just, you know, those are not maybe labeled honors, but they are a high school level course written on high school level material. So you're talking minimum ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade material that students in the middle school are taking. We're not talking about moving students from advanced classes that are at that middle school level, we're talking about actually putting high school credited courses that count towards a child's GPA at the high school level at the middle school level. So I just wanted to reference that, that we're not referencing advanced classes, this is actually making sure that students are prepared to actually take a high school course.
And succeed.
And succeed, on high school level material.
Mr. Cologne.
So you did mention their GPA, so if they take this course and don't do well, it goes in their high school GPA?
It goes towards their high, high school GPA, that is correct. Once they complete a semester, that goes on their high school GPA.
I just want to make sure they're getting credit for it.
Oh, if they take a high school course, they do. It goes towards their transcript at a high school level. And we have many students that take high school courses at the middle school, and come in with several credits on their, high school credits on their transcript, when they, when they enter high school.
Would there, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
Would there potentially be, under the evaluation system and the accountability system we have now, would there be a, like, say you have a student who enters the course, finds out they're not ready, they thought they were, they find out they're not ready for it, and I guess I should know this because I've been in a school before, but at which point can they withdraw without a penalty to their GPA?
It has to be before the semester ends.
Okay, so as long as they get out before the semester, even if it's like the last week of the semester, as long as they withdraw then?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we have to do that at times, especially when students aren't, are not successful at the high school level course, even if they do have the data point, or data to back it. So we remove students.
Is there any negative effect on the teacher's evaluation, having a student?
Once they hit survey two and three, which is October, February.
Mr. Cologne.
So can the teacher recommend that they be withdrawn prior to that?
That happens.
I mean, because to me, if it's going to impact the instructor as well as the student, it would be in the best interest of both to withdraw the student before they get to a point where it's going to impact them as well as the teacher.
I, I know from a former principal myself, we would always look at first quarter, see where, see where our students who are taking high school courses, and we immediately look at students who are not doing well. Teachers can tell us at progress report, students who may not have the skills to succeed in that class, so we do take a look at that early.
That's fine, because I know it's a significant impact to certain teachers.
I hear you, Mrs. Mendel, so that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, just let us, let us-
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Let, let us do our business. So, so Mr. Kennedy, would you like to change that to, based on what we've heard, would you like to change that to level three, four, or five, or level three, four, and five for mathematics, or all of the following?
That's a tough one.
Or would you like to leave it, leave it at the four and five, and then, rather than and, change it to or, so that you're taking into consideration the teacher, counselor, administrator's recommendations, plus the student has demonstrated success at least at a 3.0 grade point average in advanced language arts?
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. There, there's no need to do both, and maybe just leave it at level four or five.
So just change the and to or?
To and or, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
And there's going to be a few of those throughout, Tony, you probably know better than I were.
I think, I think the central theme is, we're, we're trying to ensure while, while perhaps some schools are making allowances, apparently all schools are not, and so that if we leave that flexibility there, with the understanding that we have safety valves in place to, to allow for, for teachers to, to, early on, flag a student who's struggling so that we can get them, you know, back in the appropriate level course. Mr. Kennedy, do you have a list of, of sections where you would just be recommending and be changed to or?
Let me see.
That we can perhaps go through this a little-
Yeah, well, I mean, I-
Quicker.
They are, they're kind of throughout.
I think what we're trying to ensure is we have some level of parental empowerment.
Yeah, no, of course.
And, and, no, 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 I'm just, I'm just making the public point, you know, parental empowerment to, to really help guide the, the placement of their, of their students.
Yeah, there's, there's one more on page 38.
Can you reference the-
Advanced math at the bottom.
The con, or the comment number?
Sorry, 29.
Thank you.
What, what about the physical science honors? We did language arts, what about physical science?
What page are you on, sir?
It's, it's the same page we were on before, when we were dealing with the world language arts one and two, world languages one and two.
Oh, sorry, I skipped right over.
Same sort of thing, physical science honors, integrated science honors.
Yep, same thing. That's comment 27, Mr. Lucina, that Mr. Hope's, Dr. Hope's is referencing. So there, it's also on page 38, at the very end, under advanced mathematics. Nope, take that back. I take, replace and with or. The student must have earned a level three or above on the most current state assessment in math. So in that, it's, it's struck through, but in that case, we would need to add the and/or language. Again, it's page 38, bottom of the page, A, under advanced mathematics. So that, that has been, that has been struck through, my suggestion would be to add that back.
And, and the word or.
To, yeah.
So I guess what I was trying to get at is-
Same thing on the next page.
Because we have a number of these, I think, throughout the document, where I think it would be appropriate to allow for that flexibility, the and/or, and then what I suggest, we, we look at the data, and then we come, when we're back at this next year, we can see how well it's working.
Okay.
So rather than go through each one, I mean, with that, I think the, the goal, the goal is to provide that flexibility. So, so where we, we, we state throughout the progression plan, you know, the state testing, and the others, make it and/or.
Okay, and I know, Ms. Messenger, you had mentioned one on the and/or, it was to add or and keep the remaining information below, that talked about, I think, GPA and parent teacher recommendation, or teacher administrator.
Yeah, I, I had a list, page 35 and 36, A, B, C, E, and G.
Right.
And page 38 and 39, A, B, C, and D.
So you're mentioning for that.
So, to me, those are all of those.
I would go through the whole, the whole document where, where we've, we've allowed for, you know, a combination to allow for that discretion, that, that either they, they meet that high level criteria, the state testing, and, and allow the flexibility, or, you know, as an alternative, whether it's, you know, administration's, you know, recommendation and, and, you know, proven success.
Okay, so I can go through, I know you have 38, 39, A, B, C, D, and then you mentioned E and G on 35 and 36.
I have 35, 36, A, B, C, and G, and then 38, 39 was A, B, C, and D.
You had E as well on 35 and 36?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you all right?
I believe I tried to find every single one that was what we were talking about, so.
Well, and what I would ask staff to, right, yeah, what I would ask staff to, I think you understand where, where we want to end up, so I would ask that the record just reflect that in, in all those instances throughout the document, that we allow for the or, for demonstrated success, whether it's, you know, in, in, in other advanced courses and counselors' recommendations, et cetera.
So I can make those changes and send you another copy if you'd like to see it.
Mr. Kennedy, now, do you have any other corrections that do not involve the and or?
I do, I do.
Okay, so we could address those.
Tony, back to page 37, and I, this is comment number 28, and I know I might be the only one looking at that, but, page 37 at the very top, I'm just starting with, the course grades will be assigned as follows, and then if you look at, in the box, it says quarter one 40, quarter two 40%, and then the benchmark assessment or teacher-designed exam equals 20%. Now, is that, does the classroom teacher have the discretion to make their own? Like, is it-
Only EOC exams that, that's what the ones the districts make. We make those.
Where there, where there is no EOC?
No, where there is an EOC. We treat it as a secure test, just like the EOC is, when we do it. The benchmark, are you referencing the benchmark?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Page 37.
If it's the semester, we can set it up one of two ways and make those year-long courses, because if they're EOCs, they're required to count 30% of their grade. Since we cut it in half, we have to do the same thing for the semester as we do for the end of the year, but only for the state ones that have an EOC attached.
Okay, I guess that was my question, like, the state issues EOCs, but-
Correct.
But you're talking about where-
We create those.
Our courses where there is not a state of EOC.
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
Right.
Questions, so I guess the question still applies, though, can a teacher say to the, say to the district, I don't want to use the, the benchmark assessment, I'd like to make my own test?
We create it if it's an EOC test. If it's an, if it-
They can add in a, another type of thing to add to it.
That they have to give.
But the EOC ones, we either have to make those a year-long course and, and give it that way, or split it and give a portion that compiles, that's equivalent to the state EOC, but only on Algebra, Geometry, Biology, US History.
Yeah, which are there, okay.
Right. Now civics and middle school is a year-long course, so we don't split it that way, but that's why we do those. The rest of them are just school, teacher-based.
Okay. One more question, and then I'll get off this page, or this item. 20%, is that, is that the number that we created, or does that come from statute or elsewhere?
Yeah, we're 40, 40, 20.
Okay, so-
But that's a district decision.
Okay, so, and this is what I'm getting at.
But we can't change, we can't change an EOC course, so that's-
No, I was, my question is about the percentages, because as, come from the classroom, I never liked when a, a student's grade was dramatically affected by a test on one day. So could we, for example, in this very top box, say quarter one is 45%, quarter two is 45%, and the benchmark assessment or teacher-designed exam is 10%? I'm just trying to reduce the, the risk to the student.
You can, but I would suggest you get feedback from teachers before, because that's not really set my ass to that, that's the feedback we've had collectively.
Oh, okay.
But yes, that can be changed, that is set by the district.
Okay, all right.
It's been that way for years.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yeah, I just, I always had US History, so I always had the state, the state and their mandated 30% on one test on one day. Okay, again, folks, thanks for your patience. The rest, I'm going to skip forward to note 37, which is on page, which is on page 47.
Mm-hmm.
And Mrs., Mrs. Mendel has requested here that we embed a copy of the intensive instruction waiver here. My suggestion would be, obviously, this is not a document that has embedded links or embedded documents when we, when we put it on the website, so my suggestion would be, is maybe we could just add a note here of where parents can find the student progression plan?
So they have to, in writing to the school, request a waiver, and then the school, they have to work through the school with the waiver, but they have to request it in writing.
But we can attach it at the end, if, if Dean, if, if the board wants us to also put it there.
I mean, that's how the language is written right now.
Right, but we can attach it there, too.
No, I was, I was just going to say, like, you know, to parents, if you require this, please, the guidance counselor at the school, so they, you know, directing them exactly where to go.
Oh, you just want a, added language to direct them? Okay, I'm, okay, we can do that.
Thank you. I'm going to skip ahead to 40, which is the next page, which is page 48, very top. Mrs. Mendel, I have a disagreement with you on this one. Mrs. Mendel's notes is, the principal should not override the district criteria without the input of the teacher and guidance counselor. The teacher spends 180 days with the student, not the principal, make it clear as to who is providing the data as is done for middle school. As I read through this, my, my take on this one is that the principal is the site leader, and that principal should have the final decision, not, not just on this, but on other items too. Different-
But you should consult with other people, just go-
That, yeah, you can't talk from back there, but, but I get your, again, it's, I, I agree with you, but we can't write, we can't write into the student progression plan, hey, principal, you should consult these other people, because hopefully they're a professional and they would do that on their own anyway, so. Okay, I'm going to go to the last, oh, Tony, my last one. And it's going to take me a second to find it. This is my last one. Concordance score. Tony, this is M49, your note said concordance score language will be added to this section.
And it was.
It is, okay.
It's on page 70.
Sure you want to take his word for it?
It's on page 74.
Thank you, 74.
And I don't know why I know that, but it's on page 74.
Concordance score. Oh, okay, ACT, SAT, pert.
So it's on the, here. This is the one you have on your screen.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah. I got it. Okay, your forward manning is just a little bit different, okay. Okay, thank you, Chair, that's all I got.
Mr. Kennedy, thank you for carrying the ball on this issue. Any other corrections, recommendations, modifications? Superintendent, are we okay with these changes?
I do apologize. I, I believe so.
All right. Then, members, hearing no further debate, I think I have a motion and I have a second. I have a second. We did, right? Would you like to move that we?
No, we have a motion and a second already.
To, okay, so, so what we want to do is we want to, I think we need a motion to approve the student progression plan as amended?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the student progression plan as amended this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cologne, former member of the board, State Board of Education, seconds it. Is there any further debate on the student progression plan as amended? All right, hearing none. If you guys can press your little voting button.
I'm off. Michelle, can you put me in? Put me in as a yes, I'm an I.
Okay, so the mover was Mr. Kennedy, and
Oh, I'm back, okay.
Oh, you're still non, Mr. Kennedy? Me, Mr. Minor?
She's done, she's got you.
Okay, all right. Members on favor, aye?
Aye.
Show Mr. Minor, have you, are you voting yes, Mr. Minor?
Yes.
Show Mr. Minor in the affirmative, and show the student progression plan as amended, approved unanimously. And thank you for participating and providing the valuable feedback. All right, members, we are now on approval of the minutes. Superintendent Saunders?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from the July twenty-fourth workshop in regular meeting and public hearing.
So moved.
Having been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger on the approval of the school board, the minutes for the school board workshop on the twenty-fourth and the meeting and public hearing on the twenty-fourth. Is there any debate or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Show it adopted unanimously. Superintendent Saunders, on the consent items?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for August twenty-first, 2018.
So moved.
Having been moved by Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
Second.
Having been seconded by Mr. Cologne, members, we are on the approval of the consent items. Do we have any speakers? I don't think so. Any discussion, debate? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Showing none. Show the consent agenda adopted unanimously. And we are now on our old business, and I believe this is Mr. Kennedy's. Number one, the approval of Resolution twenty-eighteen dash zero seven of the School Board of Manatee County to oppose Amendment eight. Is that your?
That is mine, yep.
Mr. Kennedy, would you like to make that motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-eighteen dash oh seven of the School Board of Manatee County to oppose Amendment eight.
Do I have a second? Hearing none, show
Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Okay, show Mr. Minor seconding Mr. Kennedy's motion. Members, do we have any debate?
Want to explain the, explain the motion, please?
The motion is the approval of Resolution twenty-eighteen dash zero seven of the School Board of Manatee County to oppose Amendment eight, which I believe a judge in Tallahassee has ruled against, and has ordered it not to be on the ballot. I suspect the sides will appeal. Do we have public comment on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Gibellina. He's not here, but I don't know if he's out in the lobby. Mr. Gibellina, come on down. Anything? I just wanted to make sure he had time to say his piece.
All right, while he's making his way here, I'll, it's been a long night already, so I'll be brief on Amendment eight. I've already gotten on the soapbox enough, and I will continue to, but
We know.
What Amendment eight does, it came from the Constitutional Revision Committee, and it log rolls together, no? Okay. What the Constitutional Revision Committee did with this amendment is they took what I would call a good idea, an okay idea, maybe, and then a really bad idea, and it used the good ideas to cover over the bad idea. And it's the two, the two good ideas, well, in my opinion, are school board member term limits and civics education. Who could say no to those two things? But what it, what it hides behind those two good items is removing local control from this school board and other county school boards in the approval of charter schools in our county by creating a statewide charter school authorizer. So this is, currently can't be done under Florida statute, thus, this is an attempt by the, those that would wish to remove power from local school boards and create a vehicle where the for-profit charter industry can move in and start popping up like mushrooms even more so than they are now. So, as Dr. Hope has mentioned yesterday morning, a judge in Leon County has ordered this, has ordered Amendment eight off of the ballot. So that was, in my opinion, a good one, a win for the good guys. By dinnertime, Attorney General Pam Bondi had issued a, a ruling or a filing, or, you know, she had filed an appeal of the judge's, the judge's order. So we're already heading to appeals court, and then we'll probably head to appeals court past that. So what my ask of the board is that we vote, you know, a symbolic vote to protect our local control of the school board to make decisions. We represent the voters of this county to make decisions for them, and we wouldn't want a decision that is currently local and has always been a local decision to be taken out of our hands and out of the hands of our, those we represent. So I personally am hopeful that it's not going to survive a court challenge, because it's obvious that it is, the intent to hide the bad stuff here, to me, is clear, and not just the, not just the judge who heard the case or ruled on the case yesterday, but two former Florida Supreme Court justices have weighed in to say that this and other amendments are beyond the pale and should not appear on the November ballots. So that is my ask. This is about protecting our local control, this is about protecting our public schools from those who would wish to divert our tax dollars to entities which may not have kids' best interest at heart. So that's, that's where we are. I won't go through reading through the entire resolution. What I, what I did, and thank you, Michelle, for the help in putting this resolution together, is I took the Florida School Board Association's, excuse me, Florida School Board Association's resolution, and I, and what Michelle did, and Michelle transferred it over to a resolution for us to, to consider. And I hope you will support this motion to oppose Amendment eight.
Right, any other further debate? Mr. Cologne?
Isn't that the motion with term limits for school board members on it?
It is.
Well, I'm a big believer in term limits.
Right, and that's, and that's the, that is the deviousness of the construction of this amendment and the advertising of this amendment, and the language that will go on the ballot talks about term limits and talks about civics education, which everybody loves.
Right.
But it mentions nothing about charter schools or removing local control from this board or other county school boards. And that's why the judge yesterday said this is not appropriate, you know, this, this item is hidden from the voters in the language on the ballot. So that's the reason that I object to it. I would appreciate this more if those who had authored this amendment had just been clear in their intentions and said, we want to create a statewide charter school authorizer, removing that power from local school boards. That way, hey, put it in front of the voters, let the voters be clear in what the voters are deciding on. But this charter school piece is hidden behind term limits and civics education, and the judge agreed. So we'll see where we go on the next step.
So because I dislike one part, I should vote against the other two parts? So it's three rules in one, that's what you're saying?
Yes, correct, yes.
And I think we all like two of them.
Correct.
So because we like two and dislike one, we should vote against the one?
Correct.
Vote against all three?
Yes, that is, yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
Any, any other further debate or comments?
Interesting.
Well, yeah, just to make a couple points. Oh, I thought I hit that button. I believe that Dr. Hope's and Mr. Cologne went before the state when the parish charter decided to, they didn't like our decision, and, and the state decided that that was okay. And I think that both of you found that offensive. So I really just wanted to point that out. I, I mean, I don't think there's anybody sitting up here that doesn't find that offensive.
Right. And the irony of this amendment is, in effect, the state is already doing this. So, I mean, as it proves, like, I, I consider my, you know, I consider myself, you know, somewhat persuasive. I've been a registered lobbyist for thirty years. Now, if Mr. Kennedy would add to his motion, the constitutional amendment that applies the restrictions on lobbying to school board members not being allowed to lobby the legislature for six years after you're a school board member, you know, you might compel me to go along with that. I mean, I tend to not be supportive of constitutional amendments, but, but as a registered lobbyist with a lobbying firm in Tallahassee, I find that constitutional amendment, you know, pretty far-fetched, because for a school board member for six years to not be able to lobby the legislature on health care issues seems like a pretty far reach there. So if you added that to your motion, you know, you might compel me. But the irony of this is that, in effect, the state has already implemented the, the component of Amendment eight, which I think we do, you know, find somewhat offensive. But, you know, I, I tend to believe that we, we are members of a statewide association, and I, I try not to, to use the dyes to make symbolic gestures. But with that, I think, I think there, there may be a very strong case in, in, in the ruling of the Tallahassee judge. But in the reality of the situation is, the State Board of Education, through its own rules, has already implemented this. And as, you know, you know, we, you know, we went through, actually, it was at my expense to fly up there, and what happened was, we, we gained a little bit of leverage, so we got what we wanted anyways. But as far as the state was concerned, they already have a mechanism with which to remove that control from us, and they've shown it time after time. Mr. Kennedy?
The, I agree with everything you just said. However, the problem is, is that the process as it goes now is that it comes to us first. And then if they, if the charter applicant doesn't like the result, they can appeal to DOE. What Amendment eight would do is completely bypass us totally. And that, as I said, is currently a, and has been for a long time, would violate Florida statute, and that's why this group of privatizers on the CRC, who are sadly financially connected to charter schools, either themselves or through their family members or their business connections, this is just, to me, just naked corruption. And we, as a school board, not only on the principle of our local control and protecting public schools, but just as voters and residents of the state of Florida, we cannot, we cannot, not just stand by and shake our heads at it, but we must actively stand up and say, this is a bad thing, and this is a bad precedent. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other, any further debate, or?
So I just want to be clear, this is a purely symbolic gesture. I'll tell you what, I am gonna be purely symbolic and vote for it, okay? If it makes you guys feel better, since we have no teeth in this, right?
It, it has no teeth, it just has the teeth of our
Will it make you feel better?
It makes me feel great to hear that you are gonna vote yes for this, that's great.
It makes you feel better, I will do it.
Fantastic.
Call question.
I, I, I can't do something symbolic like that. But at any rate, members, having been debated, we are on the approval of Resolution two zero one eight dash zero seven of the School Board of Manatee County to oppose Amendment eight. All in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed?
Come on, push the button.
This is hard.
All the cool, all the cool kids are doing it.
We're a team.
All right, I'm doing this because I want to show that regardless of any, all right, show, show that resolution adopted.
Thank you, everybody.
There are some times you have to go with the flow. All right. Wow, this is back before us. Item number two, Superintendent, approval to renew Collier County Public Schools contract for technology equipment, software, blah, 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 blah. Superintendent?
I recommend the approval to renew Collier County Public Schools Technology Equipment, Software and Services Catalog Discount Bid, number sixteen dash zero six two, SDMC, number eighteen dash zero zero four zero dash SM, not to exceed nine hundred thousand per physical year renewal.
Having been moved, is there a second? Oh, sorry, it fails for lack of a second. Is somebody gonna second it? Mr. Minor, you're not gonna second it?
He moved.
Oh, you moved. Is someone gonna second?
I was waiting for Mr. Kennedy to come back.
All right, let's wait for Mr. Kennedy to come back.
All right, I'll second.
All right, boy, you scared me for a minute there. Having been moved and seconded, is there any debate?
I'm not debating, I'm just gonna say I am not voting in favor of this. I, when we looked at the bid sheets, and there were some things that, you know, that dates did not, I did not think that it looked appropriate, and so I'm just not voting in favor of this. And it had to do with dates and who received the bids.
Mr. Cologne for debate?
I'm going to take this opportunity to agree with Mrs. Messenger and say that I'm really not happy about us constantly piggybacking on other bids. I think we need to bid some of these things out ourselves, because prices change.
We did bid it out.
Did we?
Yes, sir, and it was the lowest bid.
Yes, we did bid.
Okay, I'm still on the record about that.
I understand.
Because I'm really, really not happy with constantly seeing piggyback bids.
The staff provided the documentation of the other bids.
Did you see the contract?
Yes.
Yeah, they sent it to everybody.
Yeah, I didn't read it.
But what happened was, there were, they asked for a bid, a certain person asked for a bid.
I'm serious, I, I admit I didn't read the contract.
Three out of the four companies did it by that timeline. The one that was chosen did it five days later and submitted it to a different person. To me, that makes me uncomfortable, so I'm, I'm just not voting in favor of this.
To that note, did the, did the other bidders file a bid protest?
I have no idea.
No. Okay. So it wasn't challenged by the other bidders. All right, any other further debate? Is this a two-coke night? All right, members, let's go ahead and vote on the superintendent's recommendation to approve the renewal of the Collier County Public Schools Contract for Technology Equipment and Software. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
No?
Nay.
Okay, show it passing three to two. That's good. We, we should very seldom have unanimous votes. Item number three, approval as per the directives of the school board on July twenty-fourth, 2018, the settlement agreement to res. Now, the problem with this is, I know that we had two, two separate motions. One was mine, one was Mr. Kennedy's. So Superintendent, when you make the recommendation, could you refer to which, which of the classes of teachers this, each one of these addresses?
Sure, I believe it's stated in there, but the superintendent recommends approval as per the directors, directives of the school board
That's what I read.
On July twenty-fourth, 2018, the settlement agreement to resolve all grievances pertaining to the best and brightest filed by the Manatee Education Association against the school district of Manatee County for those specific teachers that did not apply, were rated highly effective, and had requisite test scores.
Okay, so the first one is for the teachers who did not apply?
Correct.
I think the first motion, okay, the, the, all right, so that's the reverse order.
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Mr. Minor for a question?
Yes.
Microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And how much was number three?
I believe this one was the hundred and eight, hundred and ten thousand.
Okay, and the, item number four was for, how much was it?
Fifty.
For purposes of discussion, has any money been paid to date to any of the teachers in either three or four?
No, sir, not until it's board-approved and the MEA also signs off on it.
The, boy, this is taking a long time. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have that, you know, the motion amended to, to provide that the administration be directed to go and know, the motion amended to provide that the administration be directed to go and pay it. You know, we know the names of the people.
I think, hold on a second, for item number three...
We'll talk about number three, I guess.
Yeah, let's stick with, item number three, we don't yet know the names of the teachers in that class. Item number four, we do, we do. Item number four, we have, the district has identified the three teachers.
Okay.
But item number, the three is the one where teachers will have the opportunity to apply, provide the documentation, so we don't yet know how many of them, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, the class that has the $110,000, we don't yet, do we know the teachers who have the scores?
They had not applied yet, so we were going to communicate with them a window where they could provide all the documentation for payout. So that would be needed, because they would need to meet that criteria for number three. You are correct. Number four, we have all of the information.
To pay those teachers.
Okay, regarding number three, I understand that if the board approves this tonight, the administration will say, "Okay, there's a three-week window to apply."
We were thinking thirty days, is, we were going to make sure that they had an opportunity to gather all the documents needed, we were going to communicate with them, so, within thirty days.
Okay, now, we're speculating, you know, this figure of $110,000 came up, and how did we come up with that?
The board derived that number.
I think that was Mr. Kennedy's motion.
It was, I...
Mr. Titlebaum for response?
Okay, Mr. Minor, just to clarify a couple of points, $110,000, there was two motions, and we'll address Dr. Hope's motion after this, but this particular motion itself was $110,000. It was originally of Mr. Kennedy type of, was the moving party for this particular motion, which is actually inspired by Gina Messenger. As a matter of fact, for those who did not apply, what do we do for it? So, in addition, some of your input on this particular motion, I'm getting some romantic lighting in here, the input for your motion is that we allow until October 1st. That was something that you had requested to give, we expanded the time window to allow them to apply. So this particular motion, right now, if it's approved by this particular board, and signed off by the union, it would settle all grievances, and we would go ahead and submit to the union for their signature and acceptance.
I still don't understand.
Ask me the question, let me help.
Okay.
Please.
We came up with this $110,000 for those who did not apply.
Yes.
Yeah.
The reason why that was the case, Mr. Minor, is because when we were calculating the VAM, people may not have been encouraged to apply because they felt that the VAM itself, that was their score, it's, their score, so this was to equalize a playing field. Ms. Messenger had mentioned that people may have been discouraged, and Mr. Kennedy agreed as well. So as a result, I'm not putting words, this particular motion was a byproduct for those who did not apply to have that opportunity, provided, one, they are highly qualified, two, they have the SAT/ACT score, and submit the proof of it, so that they did not have to apply. So basically, they had to be highly effective, highly effective by the VAM, they have to have the test score, and actually have to produce their score to us.
So, Mr. Minor, for a moment, I err, because we did have a speaker on this particular motion. I thought she was on the second item number four, but apparently Heather Wallace signed up to speak on number three and four. So to keep it in the proper order, we need to hear the public comments.
Okay, Superintendent, members of the board, legal team, just for clarification, which are you speaking on right now, the group that applied or did not?
No, the group that did not apply, nor have they been informed.
Okay, so I'm not going to say too, too much, but a couple of things to address your concerns, Mr. Minor. It really has been unclear where the $110 came from, because they do not know exactly how many teachers are in the group, and whether or not that number will suffice. Number two, the district has not, as far as I know, reached out to any of the teachers in this group to ask them for the documentation to get the ball rolling. So it is going to be an extended delay, because I do believe that you guys passed this some time ago, and there's been no attempt to reach out to those teachers to ask them for the supporting documentation. And then furthermore, based on the motion, with the settlement of the legal team, if you have peeked at the settlement documents that are attached, there are some major complications. I think it's been very clear that this board was talking about 1516, and there's references to 1617, as well as references to another grievance that deals with another teacher in a completely different group with a completely different lie. And so the settlement agreements are going to be difficult to get agreement on, so this might be a non-issue unless that amendment or that motion is completely undone. But this has nothing to do with PE minutes in elementary school, which is what was in that settlement document. So if it's a delay tactic, it was a nice one, but I'm going to sit down, and I'll come back and speak on the next one.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of Ms. Wallace?
Sure, Ms. Wallace, would you like to respond to a question by Mr. Minor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sure somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Or me, feel free.
Or you, that when we talked about this business before, it only pertained to settlement of 1516.
I've been present at most of the discussions or watching them at home, and I think you guys were very clear that we were speaking of 1516. Several leadership team members may have muddied the waters somewhere along the way, but it was my understanding that it was very clear we were dealing with 1516, and I think that it would be in the board's interest, as well as the school district, to do one at a time as they deal with different separate issues.
I would have been more flattered if you had just said, "Yes, you were correct," Mr. Minor.
Oh, yes, Mr. Minor, you were correct, and actually, all the board members have pretty much been correct on this issue.
Okay, so we're talking 1516?
Yes, sir.
And in order to qualify, you know, for this $110,000 for best and brightest, a portion of it, they need to, one, I guess, meet this 80% tile for SAT or ACT, that's one, okay? And two, they had to have a, an evaluation score?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, you know, said that they were, what is the term?
It's either VAM or student growth, there's actually two different terms, depending on what you teach.
Highly effective, highly effective.
Okay, that they were highly effective.
Yes.
And then you have to apply?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, now, we, so shouldn't we know right now, you know, how many, you know, had the ACT or SAT scored, plus the highly effective?
No, that's part of the application process, they have to provide it to the district.
You do not have teacher ACT and SAT scores unless they submit them to you, it's not like part of a teacher application. So the only reason why a teacher would, in fact, some of these teachers took that test 30 years ago, and they don't even have a copy. The only reason why they would pay to get one would be if they were rated highly effective and thought they qualified. So when many of the teachers saw that they had a low score, and the district refused to explain the score to them, some of them just bowed out because they're a little tired and overworked.
Okay, I'll tell you what, let's, let's...
And how long normally would it take to get the ACT or an SAT score?
I'm not sure, I would say probably 30 days to be on the safe side.
So, October 1 is cutting it pretty close.
Oh, I think that they could probably rush-order it, I think October 1 is fine.
Okay, so we're, and part of the deal is, get your application in by October 1 to share in this $110,000. That's item number three.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, we'll call you back up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Minor, one suggestion, because I think that's where I'm going to go on number four, is, we have an idea of the number of teachers who may qualify, because they're in that class of teachers. And so, one way to ensure that, let's just say, in 30 days for this group of teachers of 110, that this gets resolved regardless of the union, is if you were to make a motion to direct the district to pay those teachers who meet the criteria, no later than 30 days or 10 days after the 30 days, regardless of whether or not this gets settled, the teachers will at least get paid what they should have been paid from that 1516 period.
I, thank you, Mr. Chair, I agree, I think that's, let's get it out the door. And I'm just wondering, you know, would that be violative any, of a contract with the teachers? I mean, we give them the money, you know, it's period, forget about it, we're not even asking...
I think if the teachers got paid...
We're not even asking for a receipt.
Right.
You know, we're just, we're doing our best to do the right thing. We're not, period.
Okay. The right thing is not necessarily the right thing. We have, right now, we are going to arbitration on these particular matters.
No, forget the arbitration.
I think, I think, I think...
So, we need, there are settlement agreements, there's circumstance.
You know, I think we wish you luck in the settlement agreement, but I think Mr. Minor's motion is to direct the district to pay the teachers that qualify within 10 days of the closing of the 30-day period to apply. And if you're able to settle before that, that's great, but I think that's what Mr. Minor's motion is.
Yes.
And do I have a second for Mr. Minor's amendment to this motion? It's been seconded, is there any discussion?
I just want to be really clear on what we're voting on, there's been a little bit of crosstalk and...
I think what we're voting on is, the amendment to your motion is to direct the district to pay the teachers that qualify under this criteria. I mean, they make an application, they have the ACT/ACT scores, they have the VAM scores, they will make that application within 30 days, and within 10 days of the closing of that 30-day period, regardless of whether or not Mr. Titlebaum and the outside attorneys are able to settle this with the union, these teachers are going to be paid.
Okay.
For clarification, if I can, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Titlebaum, for clarification.
We talk about 1516.
This is 1516.
1516 VAM is for the 1617 application.
Right.
So we're not talking about 141314, so...
Right.
We're not talking about some who applied for 1516, it is 1516 VAM for 1617, that is the grievance.
Is that correct?
There are multiple grievances.
We're talking about the ones where we had the 1516 score, no, 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 all you have to do is say yes.
I asked her.
Okay, the answer is yes. Okay, for clarification, all right.
If the board directs me, directs us to do so at the district, I understand specifically, we will pay those that are qualified, that had the VAM and had the test scores, once they submit them, they have 30-day window, and we have 10 days after to do so.
They have, they have...
And for me to pursue my...
You bet.
My settlement agreement with the union.
You bet.
And hopefully sign it.
Yep, it's in their best interest, but...
Against legal advice, I understand what the directors are.
Okay, so the 30 days will start from the time the district...
Notify someone.
... notifies the teachers of what the board has directed the district to do, and then we will know the end of that 30-day period, and within 10 days, these teachers will be paid. Mr. Cologne?
Notifies in writing.
Yeah, right, okay. So, having been, so, Mr. Minor's amendment to the motion, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, is there any further debate? All in favor of amending, this is on the amendment, this is on the amendment to the motion, all those in favor of Mr. Minor's amendment to the motion, let's see, Mr. Minor, you want to go ahead, show Mr. Minor moving it, show Mr. Kennedy seconding it, so we can vote. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, show the motion carried, members, we are on the, Mr. Kennedy's motion as amended by Mr. Minor with regards to the class of teachers under the $110,000 which was allocated. Those teachers will have, they will be notified, they will have 30 days to make application and submit the required documentation. Those that then are determined to qualify, regardless of the settlement, will be paid within 10 days of the closing of the 30-day period. All those in favor, is there any discussion on the motion as amended? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Was there a mover for the original motion?
Pardon me?
Yeah, Kennedy was, and then there was a...
Okay.
Yes, there was.
I don't think they seconded it, but then...
All right, members, we are now on item number four. Superintendent Saunders?
The superintendent recommends approval as per the directives of the school board on July 24th, 2018, the settlement agreement to resolve all grievances pertaining to the best and brightest filed by the Manatee Education Association against the school district of Manatee County for these specific teachers that applied and had...
Requisite score.
Requisite test scores, but were denied.
Okay, so, hearing the motion moved by Mr. Minor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Having been seconded by Vice Chair Messenger, this was my original motion, so I will make the same motion to amend. This, we do know the teachers, pardon me?
Public comment.
We have public comment, or you want to let me roll on through? I would let me roll on through. I would let me roll on through.
You can still speak.
You can still speak if you want to.
Don't keep him.
All right, all right. So, members, I move to amend Mr. Minor's motion. We do know the teachers involved in this class, there are three teachers, and are the names in here?
Their names are not in there, and for their purposes of privacy, I have them right here, and I would not want to say their names publicly.
Okay, so we do know these, there are three teachers in this class, this, we do not need to wait for them to make application, they have applied, they meet the criteria. So, let me make my motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, so my motion is to direct the district, 10 days enough?
With our payroll system right now?
Well, I, we will do it as expeditiously as possible.
And no...
We're running payroll right now for Friday, so I will get, Mitch will get, Mr. Titlebaum will get with payroll.
No later than 15 days?
We can...
10 days?
Fifteen would be fair.
I want it as tight as possible, I want this resolved.
Fifteen would be fair.
I'll deliver her check.
We don't want to be Titlebaum done this. We are having, we are having people's soft issues, okay? But in reality, we can write the checks by hand, right? Really?
Well, we will submit it tomorrow, when they will do it as quickly as possible.
Okay, 10 days, okay. My motion is that within 10 days, the t... You're pushing your luck, Mr. Titlebaum.
Eleven days.
Eleven days, I'll meet you halfway, not less than halfway, I want the better half. All right, within 11 days, the teachers who qualified under this motion will be paid the equivalent amount that they would have been paid in the 1617 best and brightest.
1516.
Well, it's a 1516 scores, but it's a 16...
Application.
Yeah, the application. And do we know how much money will be left over from the $50,000?
I will say to you this, let me give you the calculation first.
Okay.
Best and brightest for 1617, based on the 1516 VAM, the payout for the teachers, as for the DOE, is $6,816.91 minus payroll and income tax withholdings. So you can take that number, 6,816.91, multiply it by three, brings you about $19,000 in change.
Okay, and under this, when, when did our teachers who qualified for best and brightest and were reported for best and brightest, when, about when did we pay them the money?
I would say to you, they put their application in November, and then after their application go in November, I would say, this is, again, I don't want to misrepresent...
About how many months ago did they get paid?
No, it's not that, we're beyond that one particular time period.
I'm just trying to figure out how much interest we should pay the teachers for the money they did not have.
Okay.
Can you give me a guess?
I would say...
Twelve months?
Ms. Wallace, I'm going to defer to you on this, and I'll post her pictures later on with you, with the handshake.
A year and a half?
No, Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
If you apply for best and brightest, when do you actually get the award?
I, I think it was April, honestly.
So, it's the spring, so I'm not too far off, within five, six months.
So this would have been the spring of 2017?
Correct.
Yes.
That would be correct.
So we're looking at a year and a half?
I would, I would agree approximately, at least, at minimum, six thousand eight sixteen point ninety one.
So, so my motion will include an eight hundred dollar additional payment for the.
I can't do it?
You could lead to an audit finding.
You can't do that.
Okay. All right, so we're going to pay them the best and brightest, and that's, I don't know why we can't do that.
Because we're a school district. We can't do that. I'm sorry. We can pay them what that amount, but we can't.
What are you working out interest?
I tried. All right, so the, the amount of six thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety one cents within eleven days.
Minus the applicable payroll and income tax withholdings.
It goes into payroll, right?
Correct. Okay.
Now, Mr. Kennedy. Now, that was my motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, and Mr. Kennedy, on your second.
I, I just have one concern with what, the scenario would be a teacher who, once they are notified of this.
Oh, you're going back to the motion that we already passed?
I'm on this motion.
Oh, they already know. These teachers already know.
Those three? But what if somebody gets word of this and is like, well, wait a minute, I applied and I can prove it.
The, 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 the district has gone through ad nauseam to identify those that applied. And we have documentation that they applied.
Gotcha, okay.
Mr. Kennedy?
We're relatively, we're relatively sound. So, Mr. Titlebaum for a comment.
Respectfully, Mr. Kennedy?
Always.
I have, thank you, sir. I have three individuals. Should there be anybody else that does come forward, that's, I will definitely do a review. Should, so, and please bring to my attention.
Correct, will do.
And I will, and I'll bring to the superintendent's attention as well. Thank you.
Okay, now, members, we are on, technically I pressure to turn over the chair, but anyways, we're on the amendment. No, she said she wasn't going to comment on this because she's going to let us pass it. You can comment if you want. We're getting ready to pass it. You can thank us.
Yeah. All right. Thank, thank you. I do want to thank you. On your issue, I do trust that you will follow up for the teacher that you are curious about with Mr. Titlebaum.
I will.
Okay, and I do want to thank you. The board has consistently supported the teachers on this issue. And in fairness, just for those that have been watching the issue, it's been difficult for you to get the right information to make sound decisions because of the turnover and quite honestly, just, hey, I get three minutes.
No, you're right, go ahead.
I can thank you the way that I want to thank you, and I thank you.
I just don't want you to be critical of the staff, that's all.
There's been turnover. The staff that did this isn't here anymore. Most of them. Okay, so we're moving right along, and the kids are still learning. So for the parents that were worried, your kids are succeeding, and we're on track to beat the international passports again.
And your students on last year's were above the international average, I think?
I believe so. Not that I think that's an appropriate measure. I can't always hit it, but yeah, since, since they did, yeah, we'll, we'll take that.
Congratulations.
And they're bringing in a lot for this district. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and tolerance in allowing us to finally address this.
Yeah, you guys did it, and I appreciate it, and you put up a good fight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Members, 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 we are now, we are now on the motion to amend. Any further debate on the amendment to the motion? Hearing none, members, if you will, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy, I think you were the, you want to vote? It's not working. Show, show Mr. Kennedy in the affirmative.
Wait, is this the amendment or the entire motion itself?
This is the amendment. This is the amendment. Amendment to the motion.
Okay, I'm.
It's the amendment to the primary motion.
Which is not what's on the screen, which is not what's up there. That's the actual, the full motion itself.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're fine. It's going to be five to zero both times anyway, sir.
So, so show, show the amendment to the motion, pass. Members, we are now on the amendment. The motion as amended to direct the district to pay those teachers that were identified within eleven days, even if they have to write the check out by hand. Is there any debate on the motion as amended? Hearing none, all in favor? I guess we've already voted.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, showing none. All right, members, we are now on new business item that was pulled from consent. This yellow bus has quite a history. And Superintendent, would you like to make a recommendation?
Yes, the superintendent recommends approval of the agreement to transfer bus five four two to Lincoln Memorial Academy, Inc. No financial impact.
Members, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Show Mr. Kennedy moving, show Mr. Cologne seconding. Members, we are now on debate on the approval of the agreement that transfers bus five four two to Lincoln Memorial Academy. I do believe this was the bus that we originally approved for the transfer to the Anna Maria Community Center. And they no longer have need or desire for the bus. Is there any debate, members?
Just quick question. They're going to assume all maintenance and liability for this bus?
It's there. It's in there. It's in the, it's in the, it's as is.
As is.
Claimers, every, every, every responsibility goes to the school.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about them doing the proper maintenance or anything. It's not an opiate.
We, they are compelled by statute to comply with the FDOT regulations for school buses.
Okay.
Everything that, everything you'd expect for a school bus is in that particular agreement, sir.
And it has all its seat belts and everything it's supposed to have?
Can I tell you something I never wrote in that, I never wrote there, so I, I, yeah, I don't want to misrepresent.
I just want to remind you, this is the bus that we were given to Anna Maria because it could only drive a couple of blocks.
Okay.
That's what we were told.
That's why I'm asking these questions, because it goes to potential liability and safety of the students.
Any further debate, members? Mr. Minor.
You know, thank you, Mr. Chair. I see somebody from the Boys and Girls Club here, and, you know, they, they do a lot of busing too. Now, I understand this bus is of very limited use and will likely only be used for transporting students from Lincoln Memorial Academy, you know, from the building across forty one to the athletic fields of Lincoln Park. And that probably is all, you know, the maximum distance it should go. At the same time, I think that the better procedure in, in the future is to, you know, put this on the auction block and see if anybody bites for it. It, it does have, you know, some value, although a very limited value. And I, I hope that in the future, if we have a similar bus, that we will let everybody else, you know, have a chance to bid for it to maximize whatever money it might bring in for the district. Thank you.
I, I believe that this was done prior to Dr. Green's departure, so you could make a motion to amend this to auction it off, and they could buy it from us. Or somebody else could buy it.
I'm not making that motion. I think.
Okay, no, the point's well taken.
This is really gone down the, the road quite a bit, and I'm not going to, you know, abort what had been understandings, but I don't think that it should have come this far. It should have gone, you know, to the auction, put out the bid, and there might be somebody else who would pay some money, you know, for it for also a limited use.
I think your points well taken. Any other debate comments? All right, members, we are on the approval of an agreement that transfers bus five four two, which was deemed surplus, to Lincoln Memorial Academy, Inc. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Minor, would you like us to show you an affirmative or? Okay, all right, show the motion, the appro, the approval of the agreement adopted. Members, we are now on new business, the non-consent items. This is the approval of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee Charter, which was amended in accordance with Mr. Minor's recommendation with regards to the staggered terms. I believe the amended agreement reflecting Mr. Minor's recommendations was taken up by the full advisory committee today. And they did indeed approve the changes that we made in our workshop. So we are, we are on the, a motion to approve the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee Charter as was amended with the assistance of Mr. Minor. Do I have a motion? Having been moved, do I have a second? Having been moved and seconded by Mr. Cologne, do we have any public comment?
No, but I, I do have a question.
Okay.
You'll have to forgive me because I, I wasn't able to come to that meeting earlier. Which charter did the committee agree to? The one that is for us attached or something different?
I'd have to check with the clerk. Was it the one that is attached in the minutes? The Vice Chair Messenger's question is, what charter did the committee approve today? Is it in the attachment or is this the only copy of it?
The committee did not address that, the charter today during their meeting.
Oh, they did not?
No, sir, they did not.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So they didn't, they didn't approve one? They did not. They approved the one that we had already discussed prior, but not a new updated.
Correct. They had voted at their prior meeting to bring that to the board for approval.
Okay.
They have not made any, they did not discuss it during their meeting today.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
Michelle, that's the, this copy here is dated July seventeenth.
Correct.
And is there anyone here from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
You don't want to comment?
Norm was here.
Not really.
Okay. Okay, if the, if the committee has not taken up these changes, then I think, you know, I'll move to table until the next meeting, until after they had a chance to go over it. Okay.
Definitely second.
Okay, the motion to table has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 But I, my request is that all versions be given to them so they can.
Right, so we, we will, we'll get that cleaned up. We'll get that cleaned up. All right. I think one of these, actually, the approval of Mr. Ballard was like old business before, a couple of times. So we're, we're on the approval of Mr. David Ballard as a member of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee. He has been before us a number of times. He has been before the Financial Advisory Committee a number of times. As you recall, Mr. Ballard is a resident of Manatee County. He is an attorney. He is also a staff person for Tom, Senator Tom Lee. And I do recommend that we approve Mr. Ballard as a member of the Citizens Financial Committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any public comment?
Mr. Ballard.
Mr. Ballard, do we have to hear from him?
I've been here long enough. I figured I'd get my, my time. I enjoy it. Hello, board. I'm here to relitigate the name of the school, actually. No, in all reality, the first thing I'd like to say is I've had the opportunity to speak in front of you all quite a few times now, and it has given me a much, much greater appreciation for all that you do. So thank you. I'm not trying to brown nose as you know, you're about to vote on whether I can join the Citizens Finance Committee or not, but I did want to mention that. Couple other things. I am quite plugged into school finance. That is going to be a priority in the legislative session next year. You're going to see more things come with dual enrollment. And we'll, you know, as you hire wonderful staff attorneys, as I'm sure you all know, the governor put in a budget amendment today that's going to transfer fifty eight million dollars from the Guardian program into funding real sheriffs in our schools. So as I know those types of things, kind of coming in the pipeline, it can at least give me a sense of the issues facing you all. You know, I work with Pascal, Polk, and Hillsborough County Legislative Delegations for their school boards, and so I understand a lot of the issues that you all face. And when it comes to teacher retention and how to pay them and how to keep them and how to recruit them, that's a nationwide problem. So to understand what we're doing at a state level, policy level, I think really makes me a strong candidate for this. Another, another tidbit that I will mention is that the median age in Manatee County is forty seven years old. The median age of, of, of parents of school aged children is about ten years less than that. And I would say that we should try to bring down the age of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee by having me on there. The, some of the other generations are very well represented, and I joke, of course, and they're, they're all great people from my time spending, but.
And you have a young daughter, correct?
Yes, so I also, I am a father. My daughter will be turning one in just over a week now. And although she is not yet a student in, in our lovely school district, she will be, and I have a high commitment to public education. This is very little to do with what, what I had to do with this, but the legislator I worked for was the only Republican to receive a passing grade from the teachers' union. And so I've worked on a lot of those issues, so I understand where they come from.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions for me, I would be more than happy to.
Any questions for Mr. Ballard?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I just have a comment.
Microphone, microphone, for the recording.
I just have a quick comment, and you, you previously worked for Senator Lee, correct?
I currently do.
You currently do?
Yes, sir.
And, and I was, I went down the rabbit hole on Senator Lee and found an old news article where he, where he referred to the leadership of the legislature as running this place like a third world country because they were just ramming things through, and there was no discussion and debate, and you had to get in line and vote their way. So I have a lot of respect for him for stepping up to speak when everybody else was afraid to.
Well, he was also a former Senate President. You know, he's, he's, he has the second return in the Senate, so he's, and he's a good friend. He's a good friend.
I will say that's actually not an old article. That was from this last session.
Five, six months ago, or yeah?
Yeah.
Something like that.
But he's a lovely mentor and a well reasoned man, and it's an honor to work for him, so I appreciate the message.
All right, thank you. Any further debate on Mr. Ballard's appointment?
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
Thank you very much. The, Mr. Ballard, I think, is very qualified.
Thank you.
By age and by talent and by employment. And I, I had was a recipient of a resume, you know, from a resident who has, you know, excellent qualifications with respect to finance. And I asked that it, you know, be considered, you know, by, by the board. And I was told that, well, because it had a different name on it, it wouldn't be considered, and, you know.
Do you want to deal with this point first, then we can go to?
Did you have that, Michelle?
Michelle, it's a resume, it's right here.
The Deborah Ann Schultz, and she is retired, and I guess she would not lower the, the age of the, the membership significantly, but she has, as the resume, you know, demonstrates a vast wide experience in dealing with financial issues, and not just education, but by positions throughout the country and the world, which we were fortunate to have her as a retiree here in, in Manatee County, and who's, you know, willing to step up and give her time, her talents to, you know, dealing with. know, willing to step up and give her time, her talents, to, you know, dealing with financial issues. I bring that up. No question in my mind, Mr. Ballard is...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Very, yeah. Very experienced, and we have another candidate who's very experienced. And I'm not quite sure where we are with the count of membership, you know, on the committee consolidating.
Actually, I think we have an opportunity to cure our independence issue, and we can actually appoint all three of these.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Well, we need to deal with Mr. Ballard first.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Let's get Mr. Ballard done and...
So are there any, is there any further discussion related to the appointment of Mr. Ballard? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Someone needs to second it. Just so the computer does it. There you go, Mr. Kennedy. Okay, any opposed? Okay, hearing, have you voted there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed. It's just, I think we need more discussion about how many people we're going to have.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
When are we, can we do that now?
I think, I think we can. I think it's the right time. I think it's the right time. So, so show Mr. Ballard in the affirmative, his appointment. Now, now, members, we, we heard from our legal counsel regarding the issue of independence. We heard from the Chair of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee with regards to independence as is defined in the financial world. It's, it has been their opinion that the Board placed two members on the committee that do not meet the test of independence. So therefore, we have two remaining applicants who, who I believe are very well-qualified applicants. They are independent. And so if we choose to take legal counsel's advice and the Chair of the committee's advice, then we would cure the independence issue by taking up the appointment of two additional members tonight.
And remove the other two, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Minor for comments.
And I'm sure Mr. Di will correct me if I'm wrong, but with respect to the, you know, conflict that was claimed by some members, you know, of this committee, it's not recognized by law. And by the, just the mere fact of being an employee of the school district doesn't render them to be in conflict. And it would be wrong to consider them as disqualified or second-class citizens by this Board. Now, this, the discussion and review of statutes that I'm aware Mr. Di made, as well as I did, was also benefited from over an hour discussion of these very issues with Chris Anderson, who's Chair of the Ethics Commission. And unless, you know, someone has a, is going to be affected beneficially or harmed by being there, there isn't a conflict for an employee to take actions and be a, a member of this Board. With respect to independence, that isn't, to say that just being an employee takes away independence is not supported by the law either. This was discussed by Mr. Anderson and Mr. Di in our, in our discussions and review. What is independent is something to be defined, you know, by, by the Board. It's not something to be defined by the committee. It, it's not limited, you know, by, by the statute. And that's one reason why I drafted a document, there isn't any charter right now, you know, for this group, to, to reflect there being a Citizens Independent Millet Oversight Committee and be a charter. And I think you all have that. And the, this, this draft does provide for a definition of independence and who isn't independent. And I'm, it also provides in here, you know, for who can be on there, it has to be independent citizens. And independent citizens could not include any Board member or anybody in a supervisory position in this school district, defined as anybody with supervisory responsibilities equivalent to or above, you know, that of a principal. It also, or anybody closely related by family or employment. They, they, anybody in that way would be not considered independent. It also provides that, and this was talked very closely, if I may continue, Mr. Chair, with, you know, Chris Anderson about representation of a groups of people, you know, on the committee, that is, the President of the MEA and the President of Ask Me Qualifying.
Mr. Minor, if, if you, give me just a moment. It sounds like you're talking about, the, the end result is, right now, we're, we're on the agenda items for new members, and based on what I'm hearing from you, we have no open slots to appoint any new members at this time.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Is that correct?
What you say is wrong.
Oh, okay. So we do have a vacancy?
What, what I'm saying to you is that, right now, we do not have a, an adopted charter at, and that even, that, and what I am presenting to the, the committee is a draft of a charter.
Right, but we tabled, we tabled, we tabled the charter.
Can I go on without...
Mr. Minor, just a point of order. We tabled the agenda item dealing with the charter. We are now on appointing members.
Okay, well, this is directly related to that, sir.
Well, but it's not. It's, it's not. We, we tabled, we tabled the agenda item dealing with the charter. We are now on appointing members. We've just appointed a member which completes the membership as it stands today. And, and so we're, we're, we, we need, you know, my recommendation is now we, we table, unfortunately, Mr. Chapman, I know you're here and you've been waiting for quite some time, but until we resolve this issue around independence, we, we don't currently have a vacancy unless anyone wants to move to replace the bus driver slash union representative, who really can't attend the meetings unless she is not driving a bus with Mr. Chapman, and then we can, so, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I agree with Mr. Minor that we don't have a charter in place that outlines a number. So if we want to, we can name 25 people to this committee tonight because there is no charter. Now, I...
No, we, we did, we did take up the committee and we did name the number of individuals, regardless of the charter. When we created the committee, we originally established, I think it was, well, no, we ended up with, with 17 members, but we started, we, we added two members after it was 15. We started off with nine. And so we do, we, we could take a break and go through the minutes, but when we created the committee, we ended up approving 17 positions.
So, Mr. Chair, there's, so there is a charter that is not approved yet, and then there's a separate document that governs the committee?
No, we, we created the committee and we created the number of members when we, when, you know, because we amended the number of members when we created the committee and the scope of their responsibilities. And so, no, we, we created the committee, we defined the number of members. The last two members to be added was your motion to create two new membership slots, one representing the, the, an MEA representative and one from the union for the bus drivers and the cafeteria workers. So that's where we are. We've done that.
I'm still confused as to, like, this, the charter that we just tabled is the governing document of this committee, correct?
Uh, it, it is...
Yeah, not yet because it's been tabled, but that's my point. Like, there is no, we haven't set a maximum. The maximum is set by this charter.
No, we, we, this Board has taken action. This Board has taken action and set the number of members and the makeup of the members, and we appointed the members.
So where...
We had one, we were short one member because someone had a conflict.
I remember all this, but hold on. Let me, let me finish my thought. The, I remember all of these discussions, but all of those discussions would be, in my opinion, codified in the charter that creates the financial advisory committee.
Well, no, no, not necessarily. And in fact, the charter, the charter has to, at the base level of the charter, be in compliance with the number of members that we defined. We, we passed that. We took that action.
What was the action item? And what is the work product of that action item that created a maximum of 17?
Would you like to take a break and we can have the clerk pull it up?
No, but I'm, I'm saying that just does not exist.
No, it wasn't action, no, we did, it, it did exist. It did exist.
So you, so...
And you, and you added to those numbers. It was your motion that added to the numbers.
I remember all that. My, my point is, is that, that that does not matter. The conversation that we had previously, there is no work product of that action item because that was all...
Oh, no, there is.
That was all in service to this charter.
The, the work product, no, you're, you're confusing the creation of the committee, the scope of the committee, and the number of members of the committee with a, with the membership adopting a charter. The, the two are not, the two are not mutually exclusive. This, this body, this body created the committee, and then over the course of a number of meetings, we arrived at a number of members, which was 17. We appointed those members. We appointed those members. One member had a conflict because they're on the Board of a Charter School, which means they don't have independence. And, and this is the vacancy that we just filled. So now we have a complete committee. My suggestion is, if you, you want to keep the school bus driver, union representative on the committee for now, we do not have any vacancies to put Mr. Chapman in. Perhaps what we should do is, is have a, a workshop around the charter. We can have the clerk pull all the documentation and all the minutes where this body did define the number of members and amended it.
My question still remains, what is the work product? What is the binding work product of that discussion that we had, that you, that you are referring to?
It was the purpose of the committee, the establishment of the committee, the number of members of the committee.
So where, so where, what, where and what is that document?
That's a document that's been shared. We, we created, we created by our actions, we created by our actions, the establishment... We, we, well, I'll tell you, we created the establishment...
We can go back and forth. I totally disagree with you.
We, we created the establishment of the committee, okay? We created the purpose of the committee. We set the number of members. We then amended it through an amendment. We amended the committee to add members. Then we amended the committee again to add more members.
Excuse me, did we vote on this?
Yes, we voted on it.
Then we created a work product.
We created a work product. Our actions created a work product.
We voted, we voted to add members to the committee that still had...
That is a work product. That, that is a work product.
To say that a person...
You should not confuse that with the charter, with a charter that, that lays out their operating procedures.
So, what, so there are, there are two charters or there's two documents that govern the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee?
There's one that creates it. It names the number of members.
So what's the point of having a charter then?
I, I suggest we have a workshop on it.
I mean, am I insane?
It's late. I, I think, I think, I think you would... No, I think it would be helpful to have a workshop on it so you, so that we can discuss the difference of a, a, the creation of something, the purpose of something, the membership makeup of the organization, and, and then how you then arrive at a charter and, and what the charter consists of.
Okay.
And I think that would be helpful.
I agree, that would be helpful.
Okay, we'll table this.
I think it's a good idea.
Can I, no, I, I still believe, Brady's been sitting here for five hours. I think we should add him, and here's why I think we should add him, is because we just tabled this charter. We can always go back if there is this work product that you're talking about, because in my recollection, all we have done is voted to add members to a committee that had a charter pending, and we could talk about it at the workshop. I, as long as we're on this topic, I don't believe that Pat and D, Pat Barber and Deanna Howell. I don't, I believe in, I agree with Mr. Minor. I don't think there's a conflict here because, if anything, their interests are aligned with that of the rest of the committee, which is to make sure that proper stewardship of the money. Because there is no fighting over, there's no fighting over percentages of the pie. This Board has already divvied up the pie. So it's just a matter of making sure that we stick to the percentages we have decided.
So would you like to make a motion to add an additional member to the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee?
Well, it's already there. Approval of Mr. Brady Chapman as a member of the Citizens...
All right, so let's, let's see that. And just, I, just, just to make sure it's the right posture, that we're going to create an additional member. And, and that way, we'll, we cover all the bases regardless of differences of...
Did, was this, I'm, I'm sorry, is this already a motion and second on the...
Not yet. Well, we would like, I would like you to make a motion.
And then amend it?
No, no, no. I, you, you make it a motion to, well, as a, as a new, as a new member. Why don't you just make a motion that you're appointing, that you're, you're make, you're, you're moving that we appoint Mr. Brady Chapman as a new member of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee?
Okay, so new is a new word. Okay. So I, I move that we approve Mr. Chapman as a new member of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, having been moved and seconded, is there any discussion or, Mr. Chapman, would you like to make a public comment regarding your appointment and briefly go over your background and the boards that you serve on and...
I appreciate you guys taking the time to entertain my resume, and I hope you have any questions on that, that you can address it, but I respect your all's time, so that's all.
Thank you.
I like him.
Any further questions or debate? Any further questions or debate? Hearing none. All in favor of the appointment of Brady Chapman as a new member of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You have comments?
No, go ahead, go ahead. Aye. I'll say it afterwards. No, no, it wasn't about you. He's right. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Aye.
Okay, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Show Mr. Chapman unanimously appointed as a new member of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee.
Can I just mention this?
Yes, yes, sir.
In the future, I, I don't want to get a resume dropped off to me just before I vote on something.
I think it was sent out.
Was that sent out?
It was attached.
It was attached to the agenda, the, the public agenda. All right, and thank you for your offer, offer to serve. All right. All right, members, we are now on the approval of the participation in the 2018 Formula One in Schools F1 STEM Challenge World Championships held at the Resort World Sentosa, Singapore and Singapore Asia, September 5 through 17, 2018. Superintendent Saunders.
I recommend the approval of the participation in the 2018 Formula One in Schools F1 ISM Challenge World Championships held at the Resort World Sentosa, Singapore and Singapore Asia, September 5 through 17 in 2018.
So moved. I'm moved. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Cologne, moved by Mr. Kennedy. Members, we're on the approval of participation in the 2018 Formula One in Schools STEM Challenge World Championship held at the Resort World Senesta Sentosa, Singapore and Singapore Asia, September 5 through 17, 2018. Is there any debate? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Show unanimously approved, and these students have worked hard, the community has raised the money, and it's my understanding that they have the fastest car in the world, and they, they have the fastest car in the world at their world championships, and we wish them luck. All right, request for regular meeting agenda request and workshops. I don't know, I mean, we've got the workshop, the next workshop, we have two items on it. One is the budget and capital, and then the other item?
ERP.
The ERP update, which we postponed off of this agenda to allow the superintendent to collect the additional information from the consultants. Do we have any additional future requests?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
I have three, one we just spoke of, which is about the...
Charter.
Charter for the committee. I also have one for this discussion... I also have one for, this discussion has come up before, but the discussion about rolling Just for Girls Contract School-
Yes.
Into, into referendum funding, I, I brought it up previously, I, I think we as a Board should discuss it, and then the, the-
Yeah, and I think the finance commit, the, the Financial Advisory Committee should, should address it also.
As well, as well. And then I, I have one more workshop request as well, which is the, if you all remember last week, and we've all received emails from Marley, and I forget Marley's last name now, and I don't have it in here, but it's about the, the cellular tower-
Oh, the Canaan, they call it the Canaan Towers?
Off the Canaan property.
Big tower.
It's obviously, construction has been halted of that tower.
Okay.
But she was asking us to kind of throw our voice in as the school board into this debate, and so I said to her that probably the best way to go forward with this is for the Board to have an open discussion about it during a workshop, and we can see whatever these ideas are on-
Yeah, and maybe we'll get some feedback from the county commissioners at our retreat this weekend.
Uh, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Okay, any other suggestions, recommendations, requests? All right, wow, legal updates, Mr. Dai.
None, none tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Wow, thank you very much, we'll scratch you off, and we don't have an instructional update, we do not have an operation today. Superintendent remarks.
Yes, I appreciate everyone's patience as we're rolling out our new ERP system. Just note that we are working on the bugs, and I'm sure by Christmas break, we're not gonna notice any problems, so, just a few months, we're working on it. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, would you start us off for our Board comments?
I will. Good night and good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Minor.
I'll just be, be, let's, let's go home.
Okay, Mr. Cologne.
Wow.
I'm gonna be a spoiler.
I can't follow that one.
I'm gonna be a spoiler.
I just wanna thank the Manatee football team for their great night out, I helped collect money for their, I beat people up to get money at the cars for parking, and I had a great time. Yeah, I was there.
He was there, no, he, I volunteered for him to park cars for money.
He volunteered me to park cars.
He raised money for him.
We did very well, and Coach Brown was great.
Yeah.
I just wanna thank everybody who gave me a great reception, despite Charlie Kennedy's order to beat me on sight in Manatee territory, but it was a great time, it was a lot of camaraderie there, and the people are very excited about football season.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Vice Chair Messenger.
I'm, I'm usually pretty short, and it's, it's one of the latest meetings, I think, we've ever had, so, um, just say, I mean, I don't think we've had a meeting since the first day of school, so, maybe we have. But thank everybody for their hard work today, and go team, that's it.
All right, so now, I'm gonna make a couple of comments while they're preparing a public service announcement that the Sheriff and I did on the first day of school. As you know, our Guardian started, I visited a few of them, I'm, I'm pretty proud of how the district came together. Also, as Mr. Ballard brought up, as I foretold, the Governor was going to be requesting a budget amendment from the Legislative Budget Commission to redirect dollars that were not spent out of the Guardian program, and it is $58 million, as I told you, I wanna be first in line, so we will be starting that process to find out how the Governor's gonna allocate those dollars, should the Legislature honor his request. I have every indication that the Legislative Budget Commission will honor his request, and, and those dollars will be redirected to help districts pay for armed law enforcement in, in our schools, as the Sheriff is able to create those armed Sheriff's deputies. So, the Sheriff and I did a video on the first day of school, and are we able to play it back there? It's only 30 seconds.
I'm Manatee County Sheriff Rick Wells.
I'm Chairman Scott Hopes. The safety and security of our students, teachers, and staff is one of our highest priorities.
That's why beginning on the first day of school this year, every school will have a law enforcement presence, either a sheriff's deputy, a police officer, or a trained guardian.
With the help of Sheriff Wells and others in the law enforcement community, our schools will be safe, so our children will have a secure place to get the best education possible.
Manatee County Law Enforcement is dedicated to keeping our students, our schools, and our communities safe.
With that, Mr. Kennedy moves, we adjourn, good work, team.